All right, good evening. I would like to call the June 17th, 2021 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Bell for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would like to make a request that everyone please join me in a moment of silence, followed by prayer, remembering Sergeant Tim McInerney, who we lost this past week in a home fire incident. Sergeant McInerney was a 26-year veteran with the GPD, raised to this by his family, friends, and colleagues. Please join me in this moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that might affect the citizens of the city of Greenville, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present.
Okay, if you could just announce your name.
Councilmember Litchfield, present.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, we have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Daniels wanted to add the pending legislation in the General Assembly and in the US Congress about the Crown Act. She can speak to that, though?
Yes. I would like to have that added for our 2022 state legislative program. It might be considered. The Crown Act stands for Create a Respectful and Open World for Natural Hair, and it will be for those who have been discriminated against to put a stop to that. That bill was presented by our Representative Candy Smith before the House. It's my understanding at this current time, it is at a standstill, which is the reason that I want it to move forward for 2022.
Do you want to add this as number 13 on the agenda, and then I guess we can do the discussion on it to add it to the legislative agenda at that point?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So you're making a motion to add the Crown Act as item number 13?
That is correct.
Okay.
Ms. Councilwoman Daniels, would you add the approval of the revised agenda to your motion?
Yes.
I would second her motion to approve the agenda as revised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six-zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual. Allow no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Okay, yes, sir. First speaker is Mr. David Ames. Mr. Ames, if you can hear me, you have 30 minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and city council.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, good. So I'm David Ames. I'm a member of the Environmental Commission and also Chair of the Sierra Club in this area. And the Environmental Commission, at its last meeting, became aware of proposed contracts between GUC and a provider of natural gas. And we discussed this matter and wanted to bring it to your attention, but due to time constraints, we never actually got to in motion approve, nor were we able to have a special meeting. So I thought I would just bring my opinions, but I think these are also the sense of the commission. Greenhouse gases are accumulating, and as a result, global temperatures are increasing. Climates are changing, and the environment is at risk. To avoid the most catastrophic outcomes, climate scientists tell us that we have to stop adding greenhouse gases to the atmosphere. And if we are able to do that, we may be able to control the temperature rise and the worst catastrophic consequences. So informed by this, climate science policymakers all over the world are organizing to meet the challenge of decreasing emissions. And we believe that Greenville should also. In fact, the council has on two occasions adopted resolutions promoting the, what should I say, use of alternative green energy and getting away from fossil fuels. In 2008 and again in 2018, this was discussed by the council. Now, the contracts that, as we read them, and as we have not been able to discuss them with GUC, these contracts would approve an arrangement whereby GUC would commit to purchase an amount of natural gas equal to about 20% of their daily use. And the agreement will last for 30 years. So our concerns are twofold that we want to raise with you. One is, is the continued use of natural gas consistent with your and other people's desire to get away from greenhouse gas emissions? And secondly, are we committing ourselves as a city to paying at a prearranged rate for gas, whereas in 10, 20 years, the cost of solar and wind energy may be so low that we would lose any benefit? Thank you.
You're muted, Mayor Connolly.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Dr. Ames. We appreciate your time. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers for public comment. And any comments that we received prior to the meeting reported out to the mayor and city council. And I'm looking in our public input inbox right now, and we have not received any additional comments for public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Madam Clerk?
Okay. First board is the Board of Adjustment. Councilmember Litchfield for Christopher Lilly's seat.
I would like to re-nominate, reappoint Mr. Chris Lilly.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six-zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, next seat is for Councilmember Daniels for Ms. Sharon Evans.
I would like to reappoint Ms. Sharon, Dr. Sharon Evans, please.
I'll second it.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six-zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dr. Sharon Evans.
Okay. Next seat is again for Councilmember Litchfield. This is one of the rotating seats for Nathan Cohen.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Cohen.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor, six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Last seat for this board is for Mayor Connolly, Ryan Pertle's seat.
I would love for a council member to help me reappoint Ryan Pertle.
I'll move for the mayor that we reappoint, Mr. Ryan Pertle, second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Did you hear?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am, I did. Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six-zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to Mr. Pertle.
Okay, next is the Greenville Utilities Commission Board. We do have one city seat that is up for reappointment. It's for Mr. Thomas Stotin. The way this is structured is he will automatically go into another appointment. You just need a motion to approve that.
Second.
Can you give me the name again?
Sure. Mr. Thomas Stotin.
Okay.
This is good, because I think he's the incoming chair.
Yeah. And the motion was made by, was it Councilmember Daniels and then seconded by Councilmember?
Smiley.
Smiley, okay. Motion was made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six-zero.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Stotin.
Okay, next is the Housing Authority. Councilmember Litchfield? Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Continue.
I'll continue those.
Okay. All right. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'll talk to Andrew about that. I've got two, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
One city, one county. Yes, sir.
Yeah, which one was which? Was JJ City and Mr. Ross was county?
Yep, that's correct.
Gotcha. Thank you. Continue.
All right. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. First appointment there is for Councilmember Daniels for Kevin Fason's seat.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Fason, please.
Second.
All right, motion's made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six-zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Fason.
Okay. Next seat is for Mayor Connolly. It's for Les Robinson's seat.
I would love for a council member to help me reappoint Mr. Les Robinson.
Move to reappoint Mr. Robinson, second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor, six-zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Robinson.
Next is Councilmember Meyerhofer for Christopher West's seat.
On which board is this, Valerie?
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. So obviously, I'll be continuing that one. Thank you.
All right. All right. Next is the Recreation and Parks Commission. Councilmember Meyerhofer for Ms. Carrie Watson's seat.
Continue, please.
Okay. Next seat on this board is for Councilmember Litchfield for Mr. James Yonker's seat.
Is that up for reappointment?
He is actually ineligible to be reappointed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Continue, please.
Okay. And last is the Youth Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
I don't have any one. We'll continue it.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Mayor Connolly, that concludes the appointments to boards and commissions.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number two, appointments to the Greenville ENC Alliance Board. Are you handling it, Madam Clerk?
Uh huh. So we currently have three members. They are all three eligible for appointment. Those members are Councilmember William Litchfield, Jr., second is Mr. Mark Woodson, third is Mr. Allison Siebel. And there was an application, I think, forwarded out.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Yes, I would like to appoint Mr. Will Bell for my seat.
I second that.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
They just made an upgrade. Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six-zero.
Congratulations to our colleague, Councilmember Bell, on your appointment.
Thank you.
I would like to nominate Mr. Robert Cherry.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor, six-zero.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to Mr. Robert Cherry.
Mayor, I would like to reappoint Ms. Allison Siebel.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six-zero.
All right, congratulations to Ms. Allison Siebel.
Okay, and that completes the appointments for that board.
We'll move on to item number three, which is the appointments to the Pitt County Human Relations Commission. Madam Clerk?
Okay. The county has recently formed a human relations commission. They have extended membership to each of the municipalities, asking that they nominate either an elected official or a member of staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Smiley?
I'd like to nominate our city clerk, Valerie Schueger, to serve on this commission on our behalf.
I second that.
All right, motion's made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now send it over to the city clerk.
She's sure it's unanimous.
I hesitated a little bit, because this may be a little strange.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Valerie, I assume someone asked you about this before putting you on the spotlight.
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
You'll know when she announced the outcome, you know, if she's like, "Sir, Mayor, that's zero-six against."
Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six-zero.
Congratulations to our colleague, Ms. Schueger, on your appointment to the Human Relations Commission for Pitt County.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Okay, and that concludes the appointment for that.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which are the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll hold on item number four, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by Happy Trails Farms LLC to rezone 17.2 acres located along the eastern right-of-way of Port Terminal Road and 350 feet north of East 10th Street from R6A to R6. And I will call on Chief Planner Shante Gooby for that presentation. Ms. Gooby?
All right, good evening. I'm gonna share my screen. I can't find my slides, even though I see them right there. Hold on one second, please.
Hey, only one more meeting, virtual meeting after this.
Thank goodness. There we go. I have it. Finally. Sorry about that.
Next time, we can blame Brock for not having him up on the screen.
All right, let me get up here slowly to the top of my screen. There we go, finally. Okay. This property is located in the eastern section of the city. It's specifically located north of East 10th Street. It's located along Port Terminal Road. So to the west, this is the Davis Apartments. To the south, this was the Lowes. This is a photograph of the property off of Port Terminal Road. So 10th Street would be to your right-hand side. This is a survey of the property. It is just a little over 17 acres, of which about 3.3 acres are located in federal wetlands. These are shown to you in these gray areas, so those have already been delineated. The property is currently vacant. And this particular area, yellow is for single-family, the brown represents multifamily, and then you can see there's quite a bit of vacant property shown in beige. Okay, this property is impacted by the floodplain. It is located in the Hardy Creek watershed. If storm rules apply, it would require 10-year detention. The northwest corner of the property, which you can see here, is just that little area of blue. That's in the special flood hazard area. A floodplain development permit and an erosion control plan would be required. As I mentioned earlier, the wetlands have already been mapped, and then there also may be some additional stream and some buffers located on the property. Port Terminal and 10th Street is an activity center, which is where commercial is anticipated. This rezoning could generate a net increase of 238 trips per day. East 10th Street is currently operating under designed capacity. This request, if you've been on council for a little while, this is probably not the first time that you've seen this property come up to be rezoned. In 2019, the property was rezoned from 2019, I mean, I'm sorry, from RA 20 to R6A RU. That's a medium-density residential district, and it only allowed single-family and duplexes under that zoning. At that particular time, staff did recommend approval of the request. And later in 2020, there was a request to rezone the property to R6A. And so what that did was that allowed single-family, duplexes, and multifamily. That request was approved. And so now tonight, you have a request from R6A, again, which is medium-density, multifamily, that could yield approximately 125 multifamily units, I'm sorry, under the requested rezoning, which could yield up to 200 multifamily units. The R6 district is considered a high-density residential district. So for the flood of the future land use plan along 10th Street, you can see at the corner, you do have commercials shown at the intersection of 10th Street and Port Terminal Road. You have residential, which is medium to high-density, going along 10th Street. And then as you move closer to the river, you see that the residential steps down to low to medium-density. And then you also see where it goes into potential conservation and open spaces as you get closer to the river. So the requested multifamily district is not in compliance with the land use plan. Again, the land use plan recommends a low to medium-density. Staff does recommend denial. It is not in compliance with the future land use plan. However, we have had other times when staff has recommended denial as well. If council were to recommend, if council was to approve this request, then under general statutes, the future land use plan would then change to meet that zoning designation. So if you approve this request tonight, then the land use plan will automatically change to show the traditional neighborhood medium to high-density. At the May 20th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to two to recommend approval of the request, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? All right, seen none. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first registered speaker that we have in favor of this item is Mr. Mike Baldwin. Mr. Baldwin, if you can hear me, feel free to unmute your mic. You have 10 minutes to address the mayor and city council. You have ten minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Valerie, I've already unmuted it. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Mike Baldwin, and I represent Mr. Woody Witcher, who is the manager of Happy Trail Farms. And, um, you know, I don't have a real elaborate way to sugarcoat this rezoning request tonight, other than it is what it is. We need about a building and a half more to make some numbers work with, between Woody and his, um, and his builder and the financing agency that they are talking to. Shante's numbers, I think she said two hundred, we're right at about one ninety, where we need to be versus where we were under the, um, the current zoning. So, but some of the things that existed in the last zoning, well, just about all of the things that existed in the last zoning request still, still are there. To the north of this site, you've got a significant natural buffer, really all the way to the river, owned by the city of Greenville. There might be another property owner down there, but it drops off significantly down the, down the hill. Then to the east of the site, you've got a vacant piece of land owned by Wanda Harrington. It's nine hundred feet wide to River Hill subdivision. So I feel in nine hundred feet wide and in the subdivisions that I've worked on over the last thirty-plus years, you're able to achieve transitional zoning to work your way down from a high-density zoning to a, a single-family zoning. Then to the south of this site, you've got commercial. Multi-family, whether it be high or medium-density, is still, multi-family and commercial is still an appropriate buffer off the, the main thoroughfare being East Tenth Street. Then you got the traffic impacts, the, the traffic impacts are still, um, not a, not a, a high number of, on this piece of property. And East Tenth Street is, is well, is well below the design ADT at this point. In closing, I will add that the planning board voted in favor of this request, four to two. It does have, uh, uh, four, four wetlands on the property. Those have been surveyed out, delineated, and are shown on this property, and those will be safeguarded, not only by your staff, but the United States Corps of Engineers, as well as Division of Water Quality, because they, they have a say in wetlands too. So with that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'm just reading the planning and zoning notes, just, um, uh, says here somebody spoke in favor about it being market rate. To confirm, you're not building student housing, you're building market rate?
That is correct, Mr. Meyerhofer.
That's all I had. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Councilmember Smiley?
Um, Mr. Baldwin, you were here a few months ago on this land. I'll ask you the same question I asked you then, which is, at that time, you acknowledged that the land was environmentally very delicate. And I asked you if you'd considered, given that it was an environmentally delicate piece of property, if you'd considered a low, a lower, lower intensity usage? And you said you had not. And so you've had a few months now. I'll ask you again, have you considered a lower intensity usage, given that you're dealing with an environmentally delicate piece of land?
Uh, Mr. Smiley, I, I think you got me confused with somebody else. The builder that Woody is, Mr. Witcher is working with, was at the planning board meeting a few months ago. The last time this came before this council was...
It, it was in 2020 at some point.
Yes, is that the meeting that you're referring to, two months ago? A few months?
No, a few, a few months ago, so yes, sometime in 2020.
Two thousand, when?
I, I don't... The last, the last time you brought this issue before council, sir?
Uh, it was in, the last time I brought this before council, I would say was probably in January of 2020. Mrs. Smiley, I got a pretty good memory, but I, I, I can't go back to, uh, 2020, a year and a half ago. I, I think, I don't even think you could expect that of yourself.
I remember, I remember all my conversations with you, Mr. Baldwin. Thank you.
I'm sure, I'm sure you do.
So I'll ask you, you know, you've, you know, you've been working with this piece of property for a while, you know it's environmentally delicate. Have you considered using a lower intensity use in recognition of the risk to the environment?
Well, Mr. Smiley, I'd be a liar if I said yes, because I wouldn't be up before you tonight with the rezoning request.
Okay, so, um, the other, so my other question is...
So the, the conversation you're referring to a year and a half ago, I would assume I said the same thing.
You did, you said you had not.
Okay, good.
The, so my question, my additional question to you is, you, in your argument, in your presentation, you've made no attempt to argue that this rezoning is in the best interest of the community. You've solely said that it, you said that it is solely for the purpose of furthering, of creating further profit for you and your clients. Is there anything about this that you think is actually in the best interest of Greenville?
Well, I sure do, Mr. Smiley. And, and let's take my profits out of the situation, out of the, out of the, the hearing tonight, because my profits are irrelevant to what you're referring to. I am paid the same amount if this board approves it or if it doesn't approve it. If it approves it, I'm gonna go home and eat supper, eat ice cream, and go to bed. If it doesn't approve it, I will go home, eat supper, eat ice cream, and go to bed. Regardless, I will sleep good, either one of those. But let's talk about the environment. I shot you just as straight as I could shoot you. We have some environmental sensitive areas, and believe it or not, those wetland areas act as buffers, act as, as filtering systems before water gets to surface water. So, and yes, let's talk about what it does to Greenville. What it does to Greenville is significantly impacts the tax base in a positive direction that gives all these wonderful Greenville people in Greenville jobs, roads, and other uses paid for, trash pickup, police, oh, the list could go on. So I think the, I think the good outweighs the bad by far.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any, any other questions for Mr. Baldwin? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else would like to speak? On behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional speakers speaking in favor of this item, and I am looking in the public input inbox, and we have not received any messages in favor of the item either.
All right, thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has three minutes, I mean, has ten minutes, and everyone else has three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first speaker that we have in opposition is Ms. Teresa Donahue. Ms. Donahue, if you can hear me, you have ten minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and council. Ms. Donahue, if you can hear me, you've got ten minutes to address the mayor and council.
Um, let me just check. Can you hear me? Can you see my screen?
Um, we can hear you. I cannot see your screen, though.
I did share a screen. Let's see if there's some way I can, well, it's up on mine.
I didn't see your picture.
You see my picture?
Yeah, I see your, your picture.
Okay, great. Well, I'm Teresa Donahue. I'm speaking in opposition to the request to rezone a large parcel on Port Terminal Road. I'd like to share this photo of Port Terminal Road after Hurricane Matthew. Please notice how the Tar River is flooding over the road and into the area you are considering for high-density apartments.
Just before you go on, I don't think we can see your picture. I, I can see your, the, the face, your face, like the picture that you put up for your face, I just can't, I don't think we can see the actual picture that you were trying to present to us.
Ms. Donahue may need to turn on her video.
Okay, that's a good idea.
There we go.
Let me get that picture back up. Can you see it now?
No, ma'am.
He'll see you.
Okay, um, let me try just one more thing, and then I'll give up.
Don't give up yet. We'll hang in there with you.
Thank you.
You have ten minutes.
No, I have a lot of time, I'm surprised. Well, I sent you the picture. I'm gonna just describe it, because it's, it's just too much to, to wait for you guys. I don't want to waste your time. It's a picture of Port Terminal Road, and that picture has at least a foot of water going over Port Terminal Road and running into the field. And I've sent the council persons this picture. It was right after Hurricane Matthew. There's a lovely gray blue hair in there. Anyway, I wanted to show you that picture because, to get you aware of the flooding. My reasons for opposing the rezoning are as follows. The request is not in compliance with the city's own long-term plans, plans I counted on when I bought my home. The long-term plans suggest residential uses in keeping with the adjoining property. This location is not suitable for apartments because it's so remote. It lacks access to public transportation, and it's not on a main road. The third and most important point, the apartments would sit on known floodlands. I've lived next to these fields for over thirty years, and when my son was little, we would play on the fields and in the woods, so I know these fields very well. The water table is so high that even in a drought, you'll see water in the ditches bubbling up from the ground. I can show you exactly where this happens because I know this land. Some groundwater engineer might tell you the land is workable, but they do not know the land like I do. The River Hill subdivision has a constant problem with groundwater seepage because the water table is so high. The edges of this parcel of land that you are considering for high-density apartments drop off into a swamp and a lake, I believe was created by clearcutting. After Hurricane Floyd in 1999, these fields you're considering for high-density apartments were completely covered with water. This is the truth, I saw this. For three weeks after Floyd, my house in River Hill was an island surrounded by the Tar River. If you lay down tons of cement on these watery fields, the water will have nowhere to go. And I'm very concerned, my house and my neighbors' houses will be underwater after a hurricane. Flooding is the main reason I am against rezoning this fragile land. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Are there, are there any questions? Seena, thank you very much. All right, anyone else would like to speak on, in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay, next registered speaker is Ms. Rebecca Powers. Ms. Powers, if you can hear me, you have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and city council. Ms. Powers?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, there you go. You've got it.
We can hear you now.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. My name's Rebecca Powers, and I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the rezoning request that is for the area sitting at the point of Point Terminal Road and East Tenth Street from medium to, and they're asking for medium to high-density. I'm the president of our neighborhood association that sits directly across from this property, and all the homes in the property are long-term owners. And depending on how long you've been in the city, you may realize that there's been a lot of development along this corridor. And so we, as a neighborhood, have been very active in trying to keep track of all the changes that happen, with one of the biggest, hugest ones being the Lowes Home Improvement Store that went into what was an agricultural field. So we've all been paying attention very carefully, and then we hear about this switch from the medium to the high. I have the pages that were included with y'all's agenda, and so I'll just refer to a couple items. On page twenty-six of that, it just, I'll repeat for y'all, the property's located in the Hardy Creek watershed. It requires some special accommodations. It's a portion of it's also located in the special flood hazard area, and a floodplain development permit would be required. I wanted to clear up a little bit about the density. The density, the density's already planned to be there, but they're asking to put eighty more, eighty more multi-family, you know, to grow by a considerable amount. It's not just saying we want a few more houses, it's by eighty more multi-family houses, and that you can see on page twenty-seven. I'd like to emphasize that in the staff's opinion, and I have great respect for the city of Greenville's professional staff, in the staff's opinion, the request is not in compliance with Horizon's 2026 Greenville's Community Plan and the Future Land Use and Character Map. It's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and even though Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to approve four to two, it was not unanimous. So we still have the planning, people on the planning and zoning who take into account the citizen perspective of it, that's very important. So I ask that you definitely move to deny this proposed amendment, to make a finding and determination that the request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and to adopt the staff report, which addresses plan consistency and other matters. Please vote to deny the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Any, any questions for Ms. Powers?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Bell?
Ms. Powers, what was the neighborhood association that you were the president of?
Oakhurst, that's one word, Oakhurst Neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, directly across behind the Lowes Home Improvement Store. And we've actually got two sections of our neighborhood, and both of them only have one way in and one way out onto the Tenth Street connector there. So that's Fox Haven Road and Hawthorne Drive. And Hawthorne's like right across from the Davis. And so they, they experienced a big shift when the Davis came in, it was called something else back then, but, so there's been a lot of significant things that happened, and it just is something that's so concerning to all the residents here, because, again, when we moved to this place, it didn't look like this, and we looked at the Horizon Plan, and we're counting on some more consistency. So I ask that you maintain that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Powers? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the next speaker is Yoshi Newman. Dr. Newman, if you can hear me, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Thank you, Ms. Schueger. I can hear you. And hello, city council. This is Yoshi Newman, and I live at 214 Quail Hollow Road, that is off of Fox Haven, which from the diagram you saw is directly across Tenth Street from the proposed development. So I concur with everything that Ms. Donahue and Dr. Powers have said. Chief Planner Shante Gubi has laid out all of the reasons very convincingly why this is...
laid out all of the reasons, very convincingly, why this is an ill-advised plan. I disagree with what Mike Baldwin has presented, point by point. He, I believe, is very disingenuine in the information that he has presented. We've seen this pattern with him in Happy Trails Farms repeatedly, coming back with a proposal that was denied, waiting for a while, coming back, asking for another change, coming back, I believe, this time for a third time, asking for another change because he needs this so that the deal will work out better for Woody and his builder. Those are the exact same words. "We need 900 feet, so this will work out better for Woody and his building." And this is not what this issue is about at all. And again, it completely sidesteps the point that Councilman Smiley has made, an environmentally delicate area. So to even bring the argument that this has short-term gain in terms of increased tax base, jobs, the other things he mentioned, those are short-term gains, which it is really ill-advised to trade those off for the environmental hazards and damages that will be done in this area. I urge you to respect and honor Chief Planner Gooby's recommendations, to listen to the residents here in the area. Traffic is already a hazard in this area, adding all of these additional cars, regardless of, you know, I mean, Chief Planner Gooby said it is already at capacity. So it's really kind of incomprehensible to me why this plan would be acceptable. I urge you, again, deny this request, and I would also ask that Mr. Baldwin not come back again representing Happy Trails Farm, trying to submit something, again, trying to push it through, thinking, I don't know, maybe he thinks people aren't paying attention. But yes, so thank you for your time. And again, please respect all the points that we have made here on this property and this proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Any questions for Dr. Newman? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers for this item, and I am looking in the public inbox, and we have not received any messages in opposition either.
All right. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure. Councilmember Bell?
Ms. Gooby, we've heard from a number of the public comment participants that there's a concern about flooding. I don't remember hearing in your presentation any... I know that you mentioned there's a small parcel of the property that is close to the floodplain. Was one of y'all's justifications for denying this related to flooding? I don't remember hearing that. I just want to make sure I'm 100% straight on what your reasoning was.
Our objection is to the density of the project. It does have a small portion that is in the floodplain, and there are some wetlands, but those will all be handled through the stormwater and erosion control process. So again, this is based on the density that's shown on the future land use plan.
Okay, so assuming that stormwater and erosion control protocol is followed, do you have absolutely no flood concerns about this property?
No.
You do not have any?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
A question for Ms. Gooby or Smiley. I'll defer to you if you want to go first.
No, go ahead. I'll wait.
Councilmember Myhopper?
The flood and environmental surveys are still to be determined. Is that right, Ms. Gooby?
That's right. They have done some preliminary work on... I would say that if the city engineer, Lisa Kirby, is here, she probably can give you some more information. But again, you would still have to do stormwater erosion control. Stormwater is going to require 10-year detention. So all of those things will go through the process at the time that the site plan is submitted. So they've done preliminary work at this point.
Okay, so there's still to be determined whether or not there's going to be any issues associated with that, and that could impact what could or could not be built there, right?
Somewhat, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
I realize we're not voting tonight, and I'll make these arguments again when we do, but this is just a singularly inappropriate place to put high-density residential, you know, that we know this area floods. It may not be in the 100-year floodplain, but I mean, we, you know, we have seen it flood in, you know, in our own... in our lifetimes, and heck, in minor times on council. And the applicant, you know, when he came in and wanted medium density, it was a bad idea, and, you know, we approved that. I would have thought he would have, you know, taken his win and been on his way, but now he's coming back with high density, and he's talking about putting, you know, large numbers of people into an area that, you know, they won't be able to get out of well when the water comes up. You know, this is, you know, it is just a bad idea for the city to be... for this council to be allowing additional development in areas where we know the flood... where we know that that area gets cut off during floods. You know, those people are at risk. We have to send our personnel in to help them, and those people are at risk. And it's just a bad idea. I'll make these arguments later, but I hope that, you know, when it comes time to vote on this, there'll be substantial opposition because this applicant is seeking to put screvable citizens at risk, in his own words, to simply to maximize his own profits. So I think that's a bad precedent for us to establish. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley? Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I have to clarify, or I guess question staff again. We are concerned about flooding on this particular parcel, or we are not? Because it seems like a lot of the objection is coming from flooding. Do, you know, somebody spoke of a... one of the public comment participants spoke about, you know, having a picture of flooding on this property. Another council member has made a comment about people being, you know, trapped when the water rises. Does staff have any particular photos or evidence of anything like this happening, or... I'm just curious, because on one hand, we're being told that there's no flood concern, and then on the opposite, you know, there's a lot of, you know, opinion out there and speculation saying that there is concern for that.
I do not have any pictures, so I can't help you on that end. But I will say that the city does have stormwater controls put in place. This is why we have the stormwater master plan and such as those things. So it's a new development that would fall under new regulations. I can't speak exactly to, you know, any particular flood.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Member Smiley?
Is... and if the... maybe, and it may be Lisa Kirby needs to answer this, but if the Tar River floods, it doesn't matter how much stormwater retention they have on their land, right? Because their stormwater... I mean, the stormwater is... the retention is to keep it from going into the Tar River. But if the Tar River rises up and overwashes their stormwater... I'm sorry, Mr. Baldwin, do you have a comment you want to make?
Mr. Baldwin, can you put your computer on mute?
So, in other words, I don't have a picture here in front of me, but...
I'm on.
Well, Ms. Smiley, do you have a question?
I had no question. You just started talking. I assumed you wanted to speak.
Yeah, we close the public... or we close the public hearing.
I don't have a picture here in front of me, but I live, you know, a quarter mile from this site. This area floods, you know, that, you know, it does it more... it did it in Floyd. It did it in, you know, seven years ago. It does it when, you know... This is a problem. And when these floods happen, we have to go and, you know, tell people to evacuate, and we have to send the fire department. And to help them do it, we have to send our bus, you know, city buses to help people get away from the flood. And those are our, you know... So we have a responsibility to protect our citizens and our employees from these dangers. And again, I understand that staff may argue, and anybody can argue, that we will build... that they will build stormwater detention facilities on this land. But that doesn't help if the Tar River, you know, overwashes the stormwater facility because the Tar River is the ultimate storm... that's where all the stormwater goes, on this part of the river, and this part of town, anyway. Anyway, I don't want to belabor the point. I'm sorry.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure. Councilmember Litchfield?
Yeah, Ms. Gooby, do you have a picture of the flood map?
You're on...
I'm muted, Shante.
I apologize. I think I was muted, and then I unmuted myself. So hold on one second, and I'll get back to my slides. Okay, so just to, again, show you, or just to show you what this means. So the darker blue is the floodway. You can see that does... At the very top of the screen, you can see those hatched marks. That's actually the river. And then, of course, if you've ever been down Port Terminal Road, you'll notice that as soon as you turn from 10th Street onto Port Terminal Road, it just goes all the way downhill till you get to the river itself. So you do have the floodway coming up from the river. Then you move into the 100-year floodplain, which is this light blue, and then you've got the 500-year, which is sort of this orange color, which is very, very small. And as I pointed out earlier, there is a small area right now that's shown on our maps, again, in that northeast corner.
And so in that northeast corner, do we expect to have any buildings on that northeast corner where there's... it looks to be 1% of the property, maybe, might be in the floodzone? Do we expect to have any building on that far corner?
I would say a building wouldn't be there, not necessarily due to the floodplain, but due to setbacks and buffer yards and things. Because this is... that's a very, very small area there that, you know, regardless of if it were floodplain there or not, the buildings are going to be far away from the property.
Okay, so essentially, other than that small northeast corner, none of this property, of course, except that small northeast corner, let's say 98% of this property is out of the 100-year floodplain?
Right, but while...
500-year floodplain. Is that... is that an accurate statement?
I didn't hear everything you said. I'm sorry. You kind of clicked out just for a minute. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, so, you know, majority of this property, excluding obviously this small northeast corner, which might be maybe 2% of the property, right? And if it's essentially 2% of the property, 98% of this property is out of the 100-year floodplain, and it's also out of the 500-year floodplain. Is that an accurate statement?
While that is true, I will run back to the survey again, and you can see the survey is showing you the wetlands. So that area is, again, probably low. There probably is some standing water from time to time. And then, of course, you do have the floodplain that is shown, you know, just a little peek of it there at that northeast corner.
So, but the property is out of the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and from a building perspective, do we allow building on top of wetlands?
There's... I would prefer not to answer that question in that I'm not an engineer.
I would... The city manager, I think, has some other staff.
Right, thank you, Shante. I think that Kevin Mulligan and Lisa Kirby... I do not know if Lisa has yet joined the call. But Kevin, can you speak... I think, can you first answer Councilmember Litchfield's question regarding building on the wetlands? Okay, you're on mute. Okay, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Yes. So on that site, you know, this is just the zoning, so we'd have to... they'd have to submit a site plan, and we'd have to see how they would address the wetlands on that property, and what sort of mitigation they would do. So typically, you're not building directly onto a wetland unless, of course, you're mitigating. So there would be work to be done within the site plan, within development sites, to address the wetlands. If that answers the question.
Okay, so it's a development issue. The wetlands and dealing with the wetlands would be a development issue that... for which there would be a variety of tools that can be used. And I think Councilmember Litchfield, you had an additional question regarding the floodplain. And Kevin, can you also speak to that?
Yes, certainly. The... So I saw the 100-year floodplain on that map. I didn't see whether or not we... Shante, whether the 500-year floodplain was mapped there. And I tell you, that Hurricane Matthew, that was, at least the after-effects of that were the equivalent of a 500-year. Certainly during a 500-year storm, we don't ask our developers to design to a 500-year level. But that... So is 500-year on this map?
Yes, it's not on the property, or very little of it is.
Kevin, I don't know if you can see, but there's just a little sliver of 500, which is shown in the brown, and then the blue is 100.
Okay, so I would think that parts of Port Terminal Road, we've seen that before, would be flooded. But again, as far as a zoning goes, they would have to mitigate that during the design of what goes at that property. And as you can see, and what Councilmember Litchfield was referring to, it's, you know, the upper northwest corner of that parcel.
Okay, thank you.
A small portion of that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification. Again, we heard from, you know, citizens that declared the property that was going to flood, and it just looks like very little of the property included in the 100-year floodplain or the 500-year floodplain. So thank you very much for clarifying that, Ms. Gooby.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Councilmember Smiley?
Shante, would you put... please, Ms. Gooby, would you please put up the wetland map again?
Wrong way, I'm sorry.
So the shaded area is wetlands, right?
Yes.
So it's wet now when there is no flood. And if the, you know, when we see heavy flooding, the wetlands fill up, and that's the way in which our, you know, the way in which the hydrology works around here. And, you know, there's no way to preserve connectivity to all parts of that site during a flood. You're right. We don't... I'm sorry, Shante, you can take that down. I'm not... that was what I just wanted to see. I understand that the city engineer says that we don't ask the developers to build to a 500-year flood, because we tend not to... we tend not to want them to build there at all when we think there's a threat of a 500-year flood. Anyway, this is, you know, in recent memory, this area has flooded, and, you know, the road leading to it and the land on it. And the prospect of putting more... of putting 200 homes worth of people there is irresponsible. Thank you.
All right.
I just asked... excuse me. I just needed some clarification because, Mr. Smiley, you had just argued about the river rising and affecting the property, which it doesn't look like it would.
Quite a few places that are not on that... that are not tagged as 500-year... in the 500-year floodplain flood and have flooded when we have had these... when we've had these events in the last 20 years. They don't... the river doesn't follow the 500-year floodplain because, you know, because it's just marked out that way. Every time, every one of these hydraulic events is different, and the 500-year floodplain is, you know, some sort of computed average. But we don't have to guess. We've seen where the water is. So that's my argument. I mean, I don't... you can put what you want on a map, but we also... we have pictures of what... where the water was, and it was outside the 500-year floodplain.
Any other questions or discussions?
Mayor, I have one last question. Shante, could you go to the flood zone map, please? And if y'all hear any chirping in the background, I apologize. I have a lot of family at my house right now, so.
house right now, so.
Should've signed them up for the public comment period.
I know. All right, so thank you for bringing that up. Uh, Port Terminal Road, we can see right there, obviously it leads all the way down to the boat ramp, the Pitt County Recycling Center, those are in the, uh, the dark blue area in the floodway. Uh, we have the floodway sitting there in dark blue, we have the, uh, 100-year floodplain in the light blue. Uh, it's my understanding, um, that those areas have been bought out through FEMA funds because those areas did flood previously, correct?
If, if you're speaking to, um, the properties that get close to the river, basically when Port Terminal Road kind of makes that right-hand turn, there is a large portion of those properties that were bought through the buyout from Floyd.
Right, right. And so th- those were bought out because they actually did flood, right? So any, anything further up that road that had actually flooded during that storm would have most likely been bought out, correct?
Um, Councilmember Bell, just to, just to confirm, the buyout-
There was a certain criteria.
There was a certain criteria, and that was a voluntary program, so the, so the property owner had to volunteer to be purchased.
Right, right, but, but only properties that flooded would have been approached, correct?
Um, I, 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 um, I, I certainly cannot comment. Lisa Kirby, who is, um, a, a city engineer, is on the line now. Lisa, can you answer that question?
Um, you know, buyout is, is typically handled through community development. I would make the assumption that the, um, that only properties that flooded would have been eligible for the buyout program, um, and I would, I would also add that I believe that it's only properties that actually receive structural damage that are eligible for the buyout program. So it's not just that the property floods, the structure actually has to be damaged to be eligible.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mayor?
Mayor? Yes, Mayor Protam Glover.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Um, um, when, when they had the buyout, I was, uh, elected on the council right after Floyd, but I did work with the community, um, during Floyd, when it flooded so bad north of the river. Um, and it's correct what Lisa said, they, they decide how, uh, and people decide whether or not they want this, to sell the property, or they go by, I think, uh, four feet or something of water in your house. Uh, it may be more than that, but they do, do it that way. So, um, I just, I just think that, um, well, our staff has done their job and has told us what we need to know about, um, having retention and also, because when you look at north of the river, it flooded, all those houses were under the water. The majority of them, and some places flooded that had never flooded before. So, um, you just don't know, I mean, we can sit, we can sit here and predict the weather, what's going to happen. Um, so, you know, with all the rain we had the other week, um, I thought my house was going to float down the street, but it didn't. It got, I got a lot of water, believe me, but it's good for my plants and my, my shrubs and everything, but, um, and so, um, they went back and built houses in the flood area because north of the river is really, really cu- um, has caught the majority of the flood from Floyd. And, uh, so they're right there at the river, and they've built several neighborhoods in there, um, since then, and rebuilt some that were, um, that didn't get as much flood, that the people wanted to hold on to the houses, they did get, um, government, um, monies to help them rebuild. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, um, never has any place in Greenwill been flooded the way the river, the north of the river was, because you couldn't even get over there in a car, you had to ride over there on ski, on ski boats. So I know that it was just, this was a horrible thing for the people over there, and I know that eventually that river would flood again. Uh, there, there's a lot of problems over there, there's a lot of, uh, things that need to happen over there that hasn't happened. Um, but, uh, because there's one drain that needs to be fixed because the area that never got flooded before got flooded, and, um, but the problem is, the city owns part of that drain, the state owns part of it, and the county, and the county's not willing to do anything. So, um, that's why, um, and, and there are things, a lot of other things contribute to that, but it was, it was very hot in, that was the highest area, that you could only see the roofs of the houses, and when you went over there on the speedboat or something like that, you were passing over houses. So that's my experience with, with Floyd, but, um, you know, that's why we have P and Z Board, that's why we have our, um, planning department that tells us, um, what they think and what the reason why they think it won't flood, or the reason why they will make sure that everything is, is, is really, um, done before any flooding, uh, before they will approve it. So, um, and hearing Ms. Gooby say that, um, they will make sure that there are retention ponds and everything over there, um, that wouldn't even help them north of the river. If they had them over there, I don't think it would help them, but it's because they're right at the base of the river. So, um, that's what I had to say. So, you know, it's not, I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's, um, really, um, up to us. We expect to hear from our professionals that work for us, we expect to hear from both sides of the, the corn, we expect to hear from citizens that, that have some concerns. So, um, there is going to always be, uh, in this city, as long as Tar River lives, there's going to always be flood, even in areas that never were flooded before. Even if you did all the work that the planners and zones ask you to do, it will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Glover. Any other discussion or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Litchfield?
One more quick question for, uh, Ms. Gooby. When was the last time the, uh, map, flood map was updated?
I, I would say Lisa may be better on the floodplain coverage, I do not know.
Ms. Kirby?
Um, so I, I believe there was a partial update, I don't know if this panel was actually updated, um, I'd have to look into it and get back to you with the actual date, but there was a partial update in 14, I believe, um, because the last, correct?
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussions? All right. See, none pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 25 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. This public hearing, along with the other public hearings that will be heard tonight, will be voted on at our June 21st meeting at 6:00 PM. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Thank you, Ma- Mayor. Item number five is a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by the City of Greenville to rezonate 5.2345 acres located between East First Street and the Tar River, roughly between North Green Street and Baker Street from OR, um, to R6, and, and from OR and R6 to CD Downtown Commercial. Um, Chief Planner Shante Gooby, as well as Assistant City Manager Michael Cowan, will provide that presentation. Ms. Gooby will begin. Shante?
Okay, I'm gonna go to my slides. Um, this rezoning is located in the central core of the city. It's specifically located as, uh, part of the Town Common. Um, this portion of the Town Common is, is the portion that is, uh, it, that is not restricted, um, for development. So approximately 20 acres, um, approximately 20, 20 acres for the entire Town Common, this is five acres, so roughly 25% of that. Um, some of you who've lived here long enough, um, will, uh, recognize this, uh, w- western section was where the WOW, uh, radio tower used to be located, you have a parking lot, and then you also have the, uh, Town Creek, uh, Bridge. This is a photograph, you can see at the time it was taken, uh, the Town Creek culvert, um, was under construction, you can see there's the parking lot, and then you also have the river. Again, um, this actual portion of the Town Common is shown over here, it's just a little over five acres. Existing use, so again, this is shown, uh, as a recreation area. The yellow are single-family, pinks are duplexes, you have some multifamily, and then you also have some office and institutional uses as well. Um, the property is impacted by, um, uh, uh, well, let me back up one second, I'm sorry. Uh, this property does drain to Town Creek and to the Tar River. If storm, if stormwater rules apply, it would require 10-year detention. If developed under the current stormwater rules, um, then, um, I, I said that wrong, I'm sorry, sorry. Um, okay, um, I'll just go, I'll, I'll, I'll just make this a little easier. Um, a portion of the property is located, uh, in the special flood hazard area, as we talked about with the previous request. Um, it is also, uh, impacted by the floodway. A floodplain development permit and an erosion control plan will be required for any impacts to the floodplain. A no-rise certification will be required. There are no wetlands on the property. Jurisdictional streams and riparian buffers do exist on the property, uh, and there is also a, uh, stormwater constructed wetland located on the property as well. This rezoning could generate a net increase of 350 trips per day. Currently, the property is zoned OR, and so that particular zoning would allow office or it would allow, um, multifamily of some type. Um, it is five acres, so even with, with having a multifamily designation, the five acres, uh, along with the, um, uh, floodplain and floodway issues, um, you know, it is, it's still very difficult to develop anything on this property. Um, that is one reason why the CD zoning, uh, is, uh, requested for this piece of property. As you can see, just across the street, you already have CD zoning, this is a downtown commercial zoning. Um, under the requested zoning, a mixed-use center, possibly a restaurant space, uh, kayak or kay- kayak or canoe rentals, um, could be possible on this property. These, again, would all be amenities to the Town Common itself. Um, Assistant City, uh, Manager Michael Cowan is going to go into, uh, the Town Common Master Plan, um, a lot more in-depth, but again, these would be uses that would complement, uh, the Town Common, not supplant the Town Common. Uh, again, the property is located in the downtown area. Um, the CD zoning is also important, not merely just because of the uses it allows, but also because of the standards. And so what I mean by the standards is that, um, CD zoning requires very little parking. Um, it allows for, um, it, it, it doesn't have any setbacks along the property. And so this is, this, this zone, this is why this zoning is important. Um, if developed under the OR, it would be very constrictive, if not, um, undevelopable for any kind of amenity that would go, um, for the Town Common. And so again, this is the zoning map, you can see the CD zoning is shown in pink. Okay, and then I want to talk briefly about the future land use plan and what this means. Um, so the future land use plan recommends potential conservation and open space. If you read in the description of potential conservation and open space, um, the things that it identifies, if you will, um, it helps to designate existing parkland, it also, uh, helps to designate environmentally sensitive areas, it may even, uh, recommend or show some kind of buffer between incompatible uses. And so we talk about this a lot when we see the green on the map and what that actually means. Um, the important takeaway from this is, is that even a swamp will have some kind of zoning. It can have commercial zoning. It doesn't mean it can be developed, but it does have a zoning assigned to it. So this potential conservation open space is not a zoning designation in itself. Uh, a lot of times I refer to it sort of as a yellow light or a caution light, um, about the environmentally sensitive areas, but it also shows, uh, parklands as well. Um, and so with that, uh, uh, I'm going to talk just briefly, uh, we have the Horizons Plan, we talk about, um, how things are in compliance with the, uh, with the Horizons Plan. So within this, you do have some smart growth principles, and I'm just going to read a few of them, um, and this is, you know, mixing of land uses, taking advantage of compact building spaces, um, it also talks about preserving open space, natural beauty, and then, again, to develop of, development of the underutilized land within the city's existing, uh, footprint, mixing of uses, uh, connecting existing development. Then it talks specifically about the uptown area, and it says it should be a vibrant mix of businesses, residences, education, recreation, entertainment, and civic uses. And then it also talks about the network of greenways, and as you know, the, uh, Town Creek Bridge, uh, is a trailhead to the, um, South Tar Greenway. And it also references that environmentally sensitive areas and practices should be encouraged. And again, these are some of the things that, um, it talks about that, um, are attributable to, uh, uh, to this rezoning request. And it also, I'm going to back up one time, and then it also references the Tar, uh, or, excuse me, the Town Common Master Plan specifically in the plan, so it references. And so that's where I'm going to let, um, Assistant City Manager Michael Cowan, uh, take over. And so I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and then he'll be able to take over.
Thank you, Ms. Gooby.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, thank you for just allowing me a few minutes to, uh, review the, uh, the potential project for an event center and restaurant on the Town Common, which would just be one step in moving forward. The, uh, the vision that was included within the council adopted 2010 Town Common Master Plan, the council adopted updated 2016 Town Common Master Plan, the council adopted 2016 Town Commons schematic design, and the council adopted strategic priorities and action steps beginning in 2018 and moving forward today. Uh, we'll take just a few seconds just to touch on each parts of, of this council adopted vision, starting with the 2010 Town Common Master Plan. The Town Common Master Plan in 2010 was meant to capitalize on the momentum of uptown development with the goals to maximize potential, the potential of the park, address park deficiencies and safety, and address the needs and desires of the community. This here is a schematic design that was included as part of the Town Common Master Plan in 2010, which included on the west end a civic building with a retail plaza and parking, and on the east end, we had a boat, boat, bike rental building with restroom, cafe, restaurant, and retail, and an education center. One of the primary principles of the 2010, uh, Town Common Master Plan on page 56 stated intention to starve private enterprise. More specifically, the recommendation was to encourage and promote the idea of private entities supporting the redevelopment of the Town Common through carefully constructed agreements, including the development of cafes, express service retail, canoe, kayak, bicycle rental, rest of, restaurants, gift shops, and providing a multipurpose civic building. bicycle rental, restaurants, gift shops, and providing a multipurpose civic building that included flexible meeting space, kitchen and dining capabilities, outdoor patio, restrooms, and interpreted bell tower. City Council unanimously adopted the Town Common Master Plan on November 8th of 2010. Moving forward to 2016, the council contracted with roadside Hartwell for an update to that master plan and the development of a new schematic design. The city went through a process of conducting engagement meetings throughout the community, a series of meetings held in August of 2016, including five focus group sessions in an public open house where initial design alternatives were presented. This is the schematic design that was presented as part of the Town Common Master Plan and presented to council for adoption. It included the likes of the Sycamore Hill Gateway Plaza, also included the event space, the relocation of the amphitheater, playground, canoe kayak launch, pier, as well as restrooms and a vast array of other types of amenities. City Council voted unanimously to adopt the Town Common Schematic Design and Master Plan in November of 2016. Since that time, since 2016, or the last five years, the city has completed over $3.7 million worth of projects, including the likes of the Sycamore Hill Gateway, the inclusive playground that was made possible by a $750,000 trillion grant, the kayak and canoe launch, fishing pier, restrooms, and the resurfacing of the parking lot. I'm proud to say that everything that has been completed is a direct reflection of the amenities that were included within the council adopted 2016 Master Plan. That Master Plan also included an 11,000 square foot event center with a cafe, restrooms, and expansive views into the park. And that spent space was to be located between Washington and Evans Street. The Master Plan also included a canoe and kayak rental facility and significant improvements to a town common amphitheater. From the schematic design, you can see that the 11,000 square foot event center was located here towards on the western end of the park, between Washington Evans and the canoe kayak rental building on the eastern end of the park. Per the Master Plan Schematic Design document on page 26, said this area would be a place for entertainment, celebration, and gathering. More specifically, it said the amphitheater would look to accommodate sizes of 5,000 people. And again, the event center would be about 11,000 square foot and become a major civic anchor for the park. So when we look at the proposed location a little bit closer, again, the schematic design in the Town Common Master Plan included the location of the event center at the western end of the park. In 2018, the city determined that the event space would, could not be located in that location due to land water conservation fund restrictions. Back in the mid 1980s, the city accepted approximately $25,000 in land water conservation funding as a match for the construction of the amphitheater. And accepting of this funding included the requirement that the vast majority of the park be used only for the outdoor open space activities. The city did discover or evaluate the location of the Woo Radio Tower as identified as a location where that was outside of those boundaries and did not have restrictions. As Ms. Gooby said previously, the town common is comprised of two tax parcels. The largest parcel located here in blue is the restricted area of the land water conservation and the yellow to the east would be approximately 5.2 acres that are outside that restricted area. That 5.2 acres also includes the radio tower site, which is approximately about a 1.46 acre parcel, again, located adjacent to the parking lot that's south of the Tar River. This property was not purchased by the city as part of the Shore Drive Urban Rental Project. It was the location of the Woo Radio Tower used for transmission of the station signals and it was privately owned up until 1988, when the city purchased the property and the city leased the property back to WOW for the transmission of that signal. This is a picture of the Shore Drive community prior to urban development. This is taken from ECU's digital collections and ECU's collection said that this picture is somewhere in between 1960 and 1968. You can see the vacant property located up towards the eastern end of the neighborhood. That vacant lot is actually the location of the radio tower. It was kind of blurry, but you can see the building and the radio tower right here in the red oval. Per the register of deeds dating back to 1905, the property was owned by Norfolk Southern Railroad Company, was purchased by Woo in 1959, and remained to be a private parcel until it was purchased by the city in 1988. Back in 2016, and a professional assessment was done on the tower and identified structural environmental issues such that those issues affected the stability and the structural integrity of the tower. In 2016, the council did direct staff to decommission the tower and broadcasting signals ceased in 2017 and the tower was also removed by the city in 2017. This is a little bit closer look at some of the aspects of that parcel. You can see that there was the building in the middle of the parcel with a fence, metal fence around it. Each of the three areas that anchored the tower was also enclosed with a metal fence. And each one of those anchors, those three anchors, supported three, four wires, a system of four wires on each to hold the tower in place. Those wires were draped across the parcel. And again, that area is circled in red. We look at the council's goals and priorities. In March of 2018, City Council unanimously adopted its priorities and action steps. And one of those action steps was to continue to move forward the Town Common Master Plan with one of the action steps being to issue the RFP for an event space and restaurant on the 1.46 acre parcel. This was a direct reflection of the adopted Master Plan from 2016 and this action step only included an event space and a restaurant and did not include any other type of private development. In 2018, the Recreation and Parks Department started working very closely with the East Group on the development of a conceptual design and project plan. And this plan was actually presented back to council at the January 2019 council workshop. As part of the preliminary work that the East Group did and the research, it looked at a couple of precedents with concerns to such types of spaces included in parks. One was the Milestone 229 Restaurant in the Sayota Mall Park in Columbus, Ohio. So the state of the art glass enclosed restaurant with, in the park that provides panoramic views of the riverfront, the fountain, and the city skyline. The East Group also looked at the FedEx Center, which is part of the Shelby Farms Park in Memphis, Tennessee, which has a 7,200 square foot flexible space with lakeside ballrooms that offer an expansive view of the lake and the park. Based off of this research that it did and also looking at the various elevations of the property, this is just one of several schematic designs that were developed, was developed by the East Group and presented to council back at the 2019 January workshop that had the potential restaurant, event space in one building, and a potential retail space in another. Also had terrace walls that led down to the bank of the river with an observation deck and a boat dock that was attached back to that as well. Also had some realignment of parking as part of the east end as well. This actually shows the elevation of the proposed conceptual design. And I believe that the finished floor elevation of this building was around 26 feet, which was approximately three feet above the 100 year floodplain. During calendar years 2019, 2020, the east end of the town common was used as the lay down area for the Town Creek Culvert Project. And as we all know, in March of 2020, the public began dealing with the impacts of COVID-19. Due to these two issues, the Town Creek Culvert and the impact of COVID-19, the staff of the city put this project on hold. But now that the Culvert Project is complete and the community seems to be moving past the impact of COVID-19, the city has begun to look at moving this project, this prospective project forward. For just in summary, any future project approved would be required to move forward the vision of the council adopted 2010 Town Common Master Plan, the 2016 updated Master Plan, the 2016 Town Common Schematic Design, and council's adopted goals and priorities. As included in the Master Plan, any future project would only include the private development of an event center, restaurant, and retail space for park related services. That would be a first class premier venue for meetings, convention events, weddings, and other private events, city hosted events, and indoor outdoor dining with views of the park and the river. As included in the Master Plan, a future project would not include any other type of private development such as housing, hotel, bar nightclub, or any other type of retail activity not associated with a park. Such developments are not included in the 2016 council adopted Master Plan. Also, as included in the Master Plan, any future project would be required to be an amenity of the park, as an integral component of the park, complement the character of the town common, fit in with the town common, and serve all patrons of the town common. Any future project would not include selling any portion of town common to a developer. Any future project would only include the lease of land to a prospective developer under a long term lease so that the city could maintain control of the property, ensure that the facility is being operated as required by a mutually agreed upon and council approved development agreement. And with that, if there's any questions, I will answer or direct that back to Shante, Ms. Gooby.
Is that, Ms. Gooby, is that it for the presentation too, on your end? I think you're on mute.
There we go. I just have my final slide as I always do. I'll show that to you really quickly. And that is, which again, which is in staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the future land use plan, also with the objectives and goals within the Horizons Plan. And so staff recommends approval. And then at the May 20 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, four to three, did recommend denial of the request. And I will also be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I got one question, just for clarification. Michael might be able to answer this again. Of the 2010 and 2016 Master Plans that were developed, were those both unanimous decisions by the council?
Yes, sir, they were.
Okay. And for both of those, did we have citizen input? Did we take citizen input for the 2010 and the 2016 Master Plans?
I can clearly speak to the 2016. There was public input to that that was documented that I could see. I feel confident that it was also done in 2010, but I have not looked as closely to the material that led up to the presentation to council.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the staff?
I have one.
Councilmember Smiley?
And I think I remember this correctly, the most recent conceptual work that was done as to what could be put on this parcel, it was a 4,000 square foot building and a 1,000 square foot building, right? There weren't those two, the two buildings that were laid out there?
That was, that's correct. That was what was laid out on the property.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Daniels?
Assistant City Manager Cowan, we had discussed this before, but this will not take away from the walkway at the town common, correct?
No, ma'am. This would be, this would be established so that it would again be amenity and provide the connectivity back through the greenway.
Thank you.
Hey, to add on to that, Mr. Cowan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in the 2016 plan that we actually have, one of the, one of the ideas was to do like a walking shoreline along there, I believe, because the bulkhead, I guess, is getting close to the economic limit and there's going to have to be a decision made as far as if we're going to make adjustments to that. And that would, and in that schematic design, that maintained a walkway along there as well.
Yeah, you're correct. The 2016 adopted plan did include a living shoreline that would allow the public to walk along the banks of the river. And that would require to remove the bulkhead that is currently there. And clearly, it is, it is, it was evaluated at that point in time to be close to its end of its useful life.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers registered to speak in favor of this item. And any messages that were received in favor prior to the meeting were forwarded out to the mayor and council. I'm checking the public input inbox again one more time. And it looks like we have not received any additional messages in favor.
Thank you very much. All right, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first registered speaker that we have tonight is Ms. Marion Blackburn. Ms. Blackburn, if you can hear me, you can unmute your mic. You have 10 minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hi, and Valerie, are you wanting to also activate my video? Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And I just want to thank Valerie for all her help getting prepared to speak with you tonight. And I would like to say good evening to all the council members, Mayor Connolly, and City Manager Wall and other staff. My name is Marion Blackburn and I live at 802 River Hill Drive in Greenville. Tonight, we are here to talk about a place. It's a beautiful place. It's a place with individually planted cypress trees, inviting hills, a community stage, and a gorgeous riverfront view. We call it the town common. Common means shared, a place held at the same time by each of us individually and all of us collectively. This park is our treasured urban space. It serves as everyone's destination at some time or another. Tomorrow night, I'll be there along with many of my friends on the lawn at the Greenville Grooves concert. On Saturday morning, I'll be there too, running just about sunrise. You would not believe how many people I see around there at dawn, people of all walks of life, races, and ethnic backgrounds. Later in the morning, activities increase and you see people doing yoga poses on the waterfront. Lunchtime comes and more people arrive and soon the playground fills up and people keep coming until every part of our town common is full of activity. The area in question tonight is at the eastern end where the flags are displayed seasonally and where at other times people toss frisbees, friends and lovers have a picnic inside of the water, dogs and kids and strollers all enjoy themselves. Indeed, this area is precious because it, more so than any other area of the park, allows you to sit on the grass and look out over the riverbanks. It's also, as Chief Planner Gooby mentioned, is in a floodplain and it includes the historic bridge. So before we give up this parcel or any of this treasured space, it's essential to carefully review what we want to do and find the best way to do it. Tonight, you are considering rezoning more than five acres, a quarter of the park, to a downtown commercial zoning. In the next few minutes, I'll share other possible ways forward. Whether we keep this land as is with no changes, or whether we decide to add a modest building in commercial activities, we should and must do so with intention. A look back. The town common once served as the residential and business district for Black Greenville residents who had their homes, their stores, and their families here. Sycamore Hill Baptist Church proudly stood watch over them. This land was taken from them through the redevelopment push of the 60s and 70s. Today, 50 years later, we cannot compound the grief of that action by carelessly allowing an intrusive private development here. So what are we discussing? We're talking about several possible futures for our town common, specifically the east end of the park. end of the park. So, what is the Town Common today? It's an open, inviting location, full of possibilities for kids to play, for picnics under the sun, for music. Tonight, it hosts the first loud, large outdoor concert in more than a year. It is a time to celebrate. Tomorrow, we celebrate Juneteenth with Greenville Grooves. This summer, we're grateful Sunday in the Park returns. During these concerts, we'll see people dancing, running, juggling a hacky sack, playing with their dogs, enjoying life, and savoring this special place. That's what we have right now. We have open space. We have bathrooms. We have food trucks. We don't need to change a thing. Indeed, we may decide as a community not to change a thing. You make that choice either tonight or in the upcoming days when you will vote. There is another way forward. We can choose to give up some open space and use it to create a small eatery, an open terrace café, a concession stand, a small Greenville History Museum, a science exhibition with information about the river, native animals and plants, or tribute to the community that once lived here. You could have a snack shop with discs, dog treats, even kites to fly at the park. One place to directions. The item before you tonight would place a zoning created for a different place on our Town Common. A zoning created for downtown, where buildings sit shoulder to shoulder, jammed against sidewalks and streets, a place of concrete, brick, glass, and asphalt, where hardly a blade of grass grows and certainly not a cypress tree. Typically, zonings go something like this: residential, industrial, commercial, office, transportation. So, should we take a zoning designed for storefronts and streets, for cars and commerce, and force it onto parkland? No, we should not. A downtown commercial zone allows for these uses, for example, an ABC store, a bank, a dry cleaners, a doctor's office, a mortuary, and appliance repair shop. Other cities that have lots and lots of parkland can put intensive development on their parks. We just don't have enough parkland to do that. And lastly, are these even activities we want to see on our Town Common? I think not. So, instead of imposing this zoning, let's start with the park. If it is to be rezoned, let's apply a zoning made for a park. We can develop and adopt a zoning specifically for parks. That zoning could apply to other parks in our city if we decide those uses are desired. We can develop and adopt this zoning specifically for parks, and we can call it Parks Mercantile, Small Parks Commerce, Parks Market. Like other zonings, it will have defined uses tailored to the space. The key words for this zoning are intensity and scale, low intensity, small scale. These uses could include buildings no larger than, I think was quoted by Councilmember Smiley, 4,000 feet. I would imagine smaller, more modest, up to 2,000 square feet. Certainly, 11,000 square feet is too large for a park area. We have plenty of available commercial space across the street. Small signs in keeping with the surroundings that do not distract or harass wildlife. No national franchises. I don't think anyone wants to see a McDonald's or a Zaxby's on this beautiful space. Rentals of skates, canoes, kayaks, picnic baskets, concessions, a coffee shop, bakery, sidewalk café, rooftop café. One park zoning. Another approach is to have different park zonings and apply them to each park in the city. I'm not sure we want to zone all of our parks, but that's the approach that Lauder Hill, Florida, Florida has adopted. It has several categories. These include local parks, neighborhood parks, regional parks, and commercial recreation districts. So, finally, thank you for your time tonight. And in conclusion, I just would like to say that urban parks, at their core, at their core, directly affect the public health of the communities around them. They increase our safety, and they hold us together. Our Town Common has open fields, green space, and a river, hills, pathways, and a boardwalk, a historic bridge, and an amphitheater, a sundial, a veterans memorial. Parks like the Town Common offer the most basic freedom, which is the ability to see a place of beauty and meaning, and to enter into it, to experience it directly, and to become more human because of it. That means when we want to change one, we must do so carefully. That's why tonight, I oppose the, I oppose the imposition of commercial zoning on our Town Common, and suggest that if we are to add buildings and activities, we do so using a distinctive park zoning. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Any questions for Ms. Blackburn?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Bell?
Ms. Blackburn, it's good to see you. I'm just curious, when you were on the City Council in 2010, this was approved. Were any of these concerns raised then as far as, you know, coming up with a new type of zoning for this park when it was passed the first time? And if so, what was the reason that it did not move forward?
Well, it's good to see you as well, Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Bell, as the Assistant City Manager demonstrated during his presentation, we looked at schematics, and we looked at the master plan, the first master plan. And you saw that the amphitheater was actually moved into this area, and it was to be a natural amphitheater. We never talked about, for instance, an 11,000-square-foot building or large buildings of that nature, a convention center. We, we at that time, again, it was very general. This was the first time it had been discussed. Now, we, we did not talk about any zoning because it wasn't the issue at hand. Tonight, the issue at hand is a rezoning. We were talking about the master plan and the schematics and the general, the big-picture view for this area. Did I answer your question?
I believe so. Yep.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Blackburn? I have one question for our staff. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Callan. As far as like the 20, the 2010 and the 2016 master plans, was there a civic building that was located in each of those, or was it just the 2016 plan?
Mayor Connolly, let me put the back on the screen instead of say, so you can, everyone can see. I don't want to talk budget right now. Hold on. I was on the wrong end of the presentation. Yeah, let's look at, let's look at it from this, this perspective right here. This, this is a, this is the 2010 adopted master plan, which included a very, I mean, a pretty large multipurpose civic space, and three, and, and outdoor dining, as well as a retail plaza right, right here on the western end of the park. On the, on the eastern end, it had a restaurant and a different, another building for boat, bike rental, as well as an education building. I mean, if you add up all the square footage of that, I mean, it's hard to tell from, from this, but they are buildings. Now, if you move forward to the 2016 master plan, this is the 11,000 square, I mean, it's specifically stated as an 11,000-square-foot event center on the, in between Washington and Evans, and then another building down here for the kayak canoe rental building.
Okay. So, it was always in, for the last 11 years in the plans, there's always been a large structure. And it looks like in the 2010, it looks like there was impervious surface around that, that larger building, which now is the site of the Sycamore Hill Gateway Plaza. Is that right?
That's, that's the way it appears in transparency. I was not here in 2010. So, all I've had to go by is the actual, the, the master plan itself, and actually the, the presentation that was given to council at the time by the, the design firm that was responsible for establishing this schematic design.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Blackburn? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person, excuse me, you have three minutes. Madam Clerk? But you're on mute.
Hi, sorry. Next speaker is Yoshi Newman. You have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and city council.
Hello again, city council. This is Yoshi Newman. And there are some very good points, I think, Ms. Blackburn has stated and presented here. And I've looked over those 20, the 2010, 2016 master plans, and as it was revisited in 2018. And my questions and concerns have to do with going from the 1.4-acre proposal for the civic space, civic space, to the 5.2345 acre. So, I think a civic space slash café done in proper scale could be very beautifully done and could very beautifully complement that space. As often comes up, it's parking, parking, parking. And so, how that would be accommodated is a concern I have. We again are talking about a potentially environmentally sensitive area. And while, as Councilman Smiley had pointed out in the previous discussion, we have models. We have 100, 500-year floodplain models. Those are generalizations and, and, and models. They're not rules. And so, we, I think we need to be really careful about paying attention to when those models were developed versus our present environmental conditions and what they're projected to be within perhaps an alarmingly short period of time. So, being very future-oriented in this, I think, is, is critical. I am also curious about the sizes of the parks that were presented as precedents, because we're looking at potentially a quarter of our Town Common, and I don't know how much of the space in these precedents that Assistant City Manager Michael Callan presented. So, there's some important considerations that need to be made. I think that there's real potential here if done, if done properly. And so, there's just some questions there I have about that that I'd like to be taken into consideration. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Are there any questions for Ms. Newman? All right. So, thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker is Joanne Matthews. You have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and council.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear?
Yes, we can. Hello.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I think Marion touched on a lot of what I had to say already, but one thing that I wanted to mention is that while the city manager laid out and did an excellent job of describing the history of the plans for what would happen in the space, I think nobody anticipated a pandemic. And through the pandemic, what I've noticed is that a lot more people just want to be in open space. Nobody wants to be in a closed-up building. So, the other thing that I know as being, you know, working in Greenville and recruiting additional physicians to the Greenville area, things that they're looking for are spaces for children. And I just don't see how that big, those two big concrete buildings kind of fit the bill. Right now, it's open space. There's a lot of flow over into that space when there are concerts, actually, anything that goes on in the park. I can tell you the kids are in that corner. And I just, I really, I think with everything that we've been through in the past year, the anticipation, the, we anticipate that this virus is not going to go away. Seeing that people are, have been drawn to the outdoors, I, I just don't see that it's the most ideal plan for the city. And the other thing is, you know, once it's built, we can't ever get it back. So, even though I know the city has gone through all this planning, and it's been voted on several times before, it is definitely worth rethinking better options for the use of that space. That's pretty much all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any questions for Ms. Matthews? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers, and any messages that were received in opposition were emailed out to the mayor and council prior to tonight's meeting. I'm going to look one more time in the public input inbox, and we have not received any additional messages in opposition either.
All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion.
Question?
Councilmember Daniels?
The flags. Has there been any discussion of where that would relocate to with this plan?
The field of honor, are you, are you?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels, I, I don't believe that we have had that discussion yet internally. I will say that there is, there's 15 acres of, of green space on, on the, on the Town Common that we would definitely accommodate a location somewhere on that space. But, but no, we have not had any affirmative conversations about that.
Okay. Because we leave that up for quite a bit of time, correct?
That's right. Like two months.
And just to confirm, that is a project that is done by the Rotary Club on the, the Town Common. The city does not, the city assists with it, but it is the Rotary Club's project.
Okay. But it's something we honor our veterans, correct? And it's something?
And others. We honor heroes.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Smiley?
As, as most of you have, I've heard from a great deal, a great, quite a few citizens on this matter. And I mainly been struck by the, the, you know, the, the level of confusion, right? That there seems to be a, you know, a wide array of impressions as to what council's actually planning on doing here. You know, some people, even when you explain it to them, you know, they still say, no, I'd really rather have open space. But a lot of the people I've talked to, including a couple of the speakers, to not be even in opposition tonight, are open to, you know, some version of what we're talking about doing. They just, there seems to be some concern that the, the latitude granted by the CD zoning is, is extraordinary, and the size of the proposed rezoning is, is so large. Again, I don't know that, you know, you know, fully, you know, four of the five and a half acres that are proposed for rezoning, you know, would have no functional change, and the parking lot's going to remain the parking lot, the bridge is going to remain the bridge. But there is a concern there. So, I think that council should consider, you know, potentially restricting the size of what we rezone. And I also like the idea of perhaps putting in writing what our intentions are in the zoning piece, right? So that, you know, we could create a parks commercial zoning, which was basically written in a way that it permitted what was in the comprehensive plan, but not the other stuff, right? Not the, I mean, what was in the Town Common master plan, but not the, the mortuaries and, and the, the drugstores and the pawn shops, right? That it could be a zoning that was specific to what we have in mind there. And if we were to, as a council, to direct staff to develop such a zoning and then zone this land back, it certainly wouldn't change our vision. It wouldn't impact anything we want to do there. But it might be more of a, a clear declaration to the citizens of exactly what we're trying to do and what we're specifically not trying to do. So I, I think those are two things that we should, we should consider as paths forward here, rather than simply approving the, the proposal in front of us as it's, as it stands.
All right. Any other comments from the council?
I'll echo what Councilmember Smiley said. I think there's been a lot of confusion about this. I've had a lot of people ask me, I mean, depends on how you define a lot. I've, I've been contacted by about 20 people and they seem to think that we're taking five acres of green space, which obviously we are not doing. About what, Michael, is it about four acres that consists of the parking lot, the waterway, the bridge, all that good stuff like Councilmember Smiley said. I did also just want to say to, to staff, Chantae and Michael, the presentation was great. I think it shows that the city staff has done a great job of implementing the town common master plan. So I trust, I trust that you guys will continue that movement forward. But to Councilmember Smiley's point, I, I'm amenable to, you know, making some edits here if necessary, if everybody's on board with that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I would have to agree. I would be in agreement with what Councilmember Smiley presented. I think that the important thing is to keep the family-like atmosphere of the town common and to keep it where we're not, well, we're not taking it over anyway, but you know, minimal changes may be best. Sometimes simplicity can be best.
And I also like to add too, you know, I think that from 2010 to 2016 and beyond now, I think the, the staff has been tasked to continue to move forward with the will of the council, which was unanimous in both of those, to continue to make town common a place, a gathering place. And I think that as we have seen that from years past, when I first got on the council, it was literally almost dead down there. Nobody was going down to the town common. People weren't going to events. We did not have a park down there. We did not have events that were taking place every single weekend down there. People weren't doing zumba in the park every weekend. So I think that you guys have done an outstanding job with being able to activate that. And I think the purpose of these master plans is to activate it, to bring people to that park, to enjoy it. And I think that Assistant City Manager, Michael Cowan, had a great slide on there too, that anything that is developed onto that park needs to be in close relation to what's there right now. It needs to continue to maintain that. It needs to be a park-like atmosphere. And it needs to be something that everybody in the public can enjoy. And I think that that was a very important slide that you put up there, that this is not something that is going to be, you know, something that's completely out of the realm. And I think the misconception that has come before and, and has been displayed out throughout the public is that, you know, you're going to take a quarter of the park and, and change it into a commercial zoning and have a large hotel or a large type of apartment complex there. And, and that's, that is as far from the truth as, as possible. I think that this is part of the schematic design. We always talk about putting these plans together and activating them. And this is just one more step that many councils have put together and the city staff is, is working on activating and, and moving forward the will of, of previous councils and this council.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, I don't know what would be appropriate here. I know that we've had a public hearing and we're supposed to vote on that at its future meeting. Would it be, and Mr. Attorney, would it be appropriate to make a motion that we direct staff to, you know, to recast this as to A, develop a, you know, shrink the size of the rezoning request? And B, develop a parks, a parks, a parks-type zoning, which was commensurate with the, what was in the, the town common master plan? That it permitted those uses, but nothing else. So it got rid of all the stuff in CD that is so objectionable. And then bring that back to us and then push that back through the, the process so that we could take action on that. What would be the appropriate way to do that, given that we have a proposal in front of us that we shouldn't be voting on for 24 hours at least?
Mayor and council, the council has authority to reduce the size of the rezoning, to make it less intense without an additional notice and public hearing to the public. So you can, for instance, reduce the, make the request, the, an ordinance to rezone 1.4 acres, the old radio site. And Mr. Cowan can put that slide up to show you the, 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 the size of the old radio station site. But in terms of these other proposals that you have, Councilmember, about a general, a general commercial district and limiting the uses, we don't have conditional zoning. So whatever uses are available in a downtown commercial use would, 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 would be applicable.
And my question is, if, if the desire of council, and I'm not, it may or may not be, only a couple of people have spoken about this, were to actually create a different zoning that was not CD, that was a park zone, that it might have to be a new zoning in the city, but the staff can write that. What would be, you know, can I propose that now? Or do I need to wait until we have a, till we're actually eligible to vote on this item and to, to propose alternatives?
If the, your second point about the general commercial district and, and changing that, that would have to go back through the whole planning and zoning process. Council could make a motion to, to consider, when it votes on Monday, to, to rezone a smaller portion of the five acres. They could, you could do that without additional notice and public hearing.
I understand that. But my, my, Ms. Wall, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to clarify, I, I think for you, Councilmember Smiley and the rest of the council, what I hear the city attorney saying is that tonight, what the council could do is take of, is, is make a motion to consider directing staff to prepare an ordinance that reflects a smaller portion of the original 5.2345 acre lot for consideration on Monday night. But that the council cannot consider directing, so that's the first one. You got, you all can make a motion to ask us to prepare the revised ordinance on Monday night, the, June the 21st for consideration. But what I also hear the attorney saying is that you all cannot make a motion tonight or should not make a motion tonight on directing staff to go back and develop a new zoning district. That would have to be handled on Monday night. Am I correct, City Attorney McGirt?
Yeah, the, the, the second request, that would have to go through the whole process of?
I understand.
Right, right.
But you could, that could be adopted.
Right. I think question, the concern from Councilmember Smiley is when would the council consider those actions? So again, Councilmember Smiley, I believe that tonight, the council could direct staff to, to prepare an ordinance that would rezone a smaller portion of the lot. And you could bring that for your consideration on Monday night. But you would have to consider the discussion about the new zoning district as a whole on Monday night.
I think I understand. And I will wait and make that motion on Monday night when I can make the whole thing.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Bell.
City Manager Wall or Assistant City Manager Cowan, this is probably directed towards you. Reducing the acreage that is currently, you know, in the works, how, how much of a reduction would be reasonable? And if we were to reduce it at all, how much would that impact your ability to move forward with the plan for the site?
The?
You go on, Michael.
The, the plan all along, based off of the council priority and, and action step, was to develop the 1.46 acres as an event center and restaurant. So any development, whether it's, whether it's proposed at 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, 11,000, whatever, would be considered per the master plan, moving forward the master plan, to be just on that 1.46 acres of property. It was never intended to, to go beyond that.
Okay.
And that, and that's, that is consistent with the work that was done, about a six month work, amount of, of work and effort put in with the Recreation and Parks Department, with the assistance of, of the, the East Group that was presented back to council in January 2019.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say that whatever we plan to, whatever we approve to be placed down there, please keep in mind the, the church and the people who lived down there before, before the church was burned down. And keep in mind, when we make decisions about the park, that we have the Sycamore Hill memory, memory lane or whatever, and the, and the really nice, the nice, I guess, Gateway Plaza, thinking, and, and we need to make sure that we keep the church in mind, that we don't do anything that will, will, you know, make them feel bad about the church being there at Town Commons. So we have to be very, very careful as to what we do or what we allow to actually go there. So I've been a lot of places and seen a lot of, of parks and recreation facilities all over the, the, a lot of places in the U.S. And there are a lot that have like mixed businesses and mixed things. And there are some that sell alcohol, but in a very discreet way. I think that we need to remember that what those families down there gave up when they had to leave from down there. So let's keep, always keep them in mind and, and try to make sure that they understand what's going on and that, that is okay with them. Because we don't want anything that's going to look distasteful or be distasteful for the memory of the people who lived down there before and the church. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Proton Glover. Any other comments or discussion? All right. Pursuit to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the council will vote on this public hearing as well as the other three public hearings on our, at our meeting on June 21st at 6:00 P.M. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The next public hearing is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend Title IX, Chapter Four, Article U, Appendix A on the Table of Uses of the City Code to add 8X Dance Studio as a permitted use in the following districts, CDF, CG, CH, and add 13E Partial Delivery Service as a permitted use in the following districts, CG and CN. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Gooby for the presentation.
All right. Good evening. This should be fairly simple. Hope I didn't jinx this. This, this request is actually two requests. We've combined it into one. This is coming from staff. And again, we occasionally run into issues from folks calling us or from developments come in that from time to time, we recognize that probably a change to the ordinance is needed. And so in this particular case, we have a dance studio. And again, dance studio, studio would be, you know, teaching tap, jazz ballet, anything like that. And so it's currently allowed in a variety of uses, but it's not allowed in commercial, which sort of didn't make sense that you could have it in office, but you didn't allow it in a commercial district. And so what staff is asking to do is to, first of all, add it as a permitted use to general commercial and heavy commercial. And then to make it a permitted use in the downtown commercial fringe district, which is currently a special use. And the, oops, I'm sorry. And then the other change, I'm sorry, would be a parcel delivery service, which is, is just what it sounds like. It could be a courier service or something along those lines. And again, it's allowed in some commercial, the downtown commercial, it's allowed in industrial, but it wasn't allowed in our general commercial and our neighborhood commercial districts. And it certainly makes sense that if you can do it in those, in the current districts, that it would make sense to also allow it in these two districts. And so again, it's just permitted use. And so in staff's opinion, this is in compliance with the Horizons Plan. We are referring back to policy, which is 4.3.1, which again is to modernize and diversify the local economy, support the growth of a variety of employment opportunities and businesses that help diversify Greenville's economy. And again, staff recommends approval. And the Planning and Zoning Commission at the May 20th meeting unanimously recommended approval of the request. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? All right, none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward and please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item. And I am looking in the public input inbox. We have not received any messages in favor either.
Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item. And again, the inbox, we do not have any messages in opposition either.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. Speak of the Senate.
Dance is good.
Thank you, Councilmember Smiley.
My daughter's a dancer. I'm, I'm, it's, it's good.
Pursuit to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And also to reiterate, this public hearing, as well as the other three public hearings, will be voted on on our June 21st, 2021 meeting at 6:00 P.M. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The next public hearing is to consider an ordinance requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission, amending Title IX of the City Code to be in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 160D. And again, I will call on Chief Planner, Chantae Gooby. Ms. Gooby?
Okay. This is one that you've probably heard us talk about now for probably a year. This is an update to the North Carolina General Statutes. So really, this is a way for us to be in align with the new state law. It's fairly simple. This is, the purpose of it is, this has taken many, many years for this to actually come to fruition and, and get to us. And so the purpose of 160D is consolidate, reorganize, and adopt consensus reforms. So what this means is currently cities operate under the North Carolina General Statutes under 160A and counties work under 150, 153A. So from now on, effective July 1st, they have all been combined to make 160D. So what this does is this makes development far more straightforward when you're changing jurisdictions. And it no longer means changing the rule sets. And so what this means is, is that a rezoning in a city and a rezoning in the county should follow the, the same basic procedures. It, it, it should be easy for, whether it be developers or homeowners or, or anyone, that it, it is, it makes more sense and it simplifies the different processes that go on from changing from cities to counties. And then what this also does is for someone like me, who's only worked for a city, I can still take that, that same knowledge and information and go to a county and, and not skip a beat. Also what it does is it helps to reorganize. So it basically tries to put everything under 160D so that we're not looking in different parts and trying to find something. And it tries to make it more logical and easier. No major policy change. No major policy changes, but it does have some clarifying amendments and it, um, updates and gets rid of some old language. It removes conditional use permits in districts. That's not really a concern for us because we don't have that. Um, it simplifies the planned consistency statements. Um, I will say we have been doing these for a while. I think we've made them fairly simple and I think everybody gets what we're doing. Um, but it has simplified it a little bit for us and for others. And the vested rights timelines codified, what that basically means is that, um, with approvals, and depending on what type of approval you have, you have a certain amount of time that approval is good for. So for instance, preliminary plats, which is where you would come in and streets and lay out your lots, that approval is good for five years. After five years, um, you, you have to come back. And if any new rules have been changed, you have to meet those rules. And so what this does is again, it just sets out a very specific timeline for the vesting. Uh, again, obviously some of the language is very old. We're updating it. We're also adding in some definitions that sort of have been understood and adopted. Uh, but we've actually, now they're actually using those terms and making it an, uh, or making it an actual term. Um, it's clarifying decision types, which is legislative, which is what you do, quasi judicial, which is more with Board of Adjustment and, um, uh, Historic Preservation Commission, and then administrative decisions, which are the kinds of decisions that staff makes. Planned consistency statements, again, when you make your motions, we always have in that la, in your language about if it's consistent with your plans or not. Um, and it talks about plan and consistencies must be discussed during the hearing, um, clearly taken into consideration. And as you know, we always talk about those things whenever we're doing, uh, rezonings or even text amendments. Vested rights, so this is what I talked about a little earlier. On the left-hand side, this talks about the different kind of a permit that you might get. Uh, again, uh, development permits such as site plans, which are for commercial and multifamily, plats, special use permits, um, those all are valid for 12 months now. Um, and then some of the other ones you may have, again, multi-phase development. And what this does is again, it just, it just codifies all these things for everyone to be able to use the table, cities and counties both. Conflict of interest, um, this says that, um, a board member, uh, or a, a board member must not vote on a decision if the outcome would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on that member. So that's your current conflict of interest, which is very narrow. The new one broadens that. And it also specifically talks about zoning amendments or text amendments. And so what it says is a governing or appointed board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property is subject to the rezoning petition, or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the member has a close familial business or other associational relationship. So you can see how that actually broadens the scope of the conflict of interest, um, as opposed to having that very narrow scope that it used to. Um, and then this is also a conflict of interest. It says no staff member shall make final decision on any administrative decision if the applicant or person subject to the decision is a person with whom the staff member has close familial business or other associational relationship. I will say for a city the size of Greenville, we would, um, very rarely have a situation where, um, we only have one staff member who approves things and then they fall into this situation. So this really isn't something we have to be concerned about. Um, there, there are really small towns, um, that you may only have a, a two or three-person staff. So I'm just mentioning that. That's really not anything that we should have, um, any concerns about. Um, quasi, conflict of interest for quasi judicial decisions. Um, and so what this says is in addition to the financial and relationship conflicts, uh, for QJ decisions, board members also must not vote if the board member has bias or undisclosed ex parte communications. So this was something that was under case law that is now actually been put in writing, um, in, um, in the general statutes. Since you don't, since you don't hold QJ decisions, this is nothing you have to worry about. But what this does do is again, um, this pulls the conflict of interest closer to the Board of Adjustment and our Historic Preservation Commission members. Uh, any, any approvals given under the old rules will remain valid. You have what we call permit choice, which is if you are caught in the middle, you get to decide which way you would like to go. Do you want to follow the old rules or do you want to go with the new rules? So at the, uh, May Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, they unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request. Um, again, we, um, really don't have a lot of choice in this. We want to be compliant with the, uh, general statutes. Uh, and so, um, you know, staff will then take this information to any of the other boards and commissions, um, that, um, are affected by this change. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Did anybody like Ms. Gooby to read the entire document?
I'd like her to read, read it twice, once tonight and once to get a future meeting so that we can.
How long do you want this meeting to go?
I thought that was one of the requirements of the new rules. You had to have two full readings of the, uh...
That would be tough.
Can we move to approve this tonight or do we have to wait?
We have to wait.
There's no public hearing.
There is a public hearing. Um, all right. Any other questions for staff? Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of, uh, on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers tonight in favor of this item, and looking in the inbox, we have not received any messages in favor either.
Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and looking in the inbox, we have not received any messages in opposition either.
The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. I will note that I think the staff has been very active since three of the four public hearings were staff initiated, which means I guess you guys are working like crazy.
We are busy little bees.
That's right. That's right. Good thing happened. Pursuit to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments and such comments shall be forwarded to the city council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the council intends to vote on this public hearing as well as the three other public hearings that were heard tonight at our June 21st, 2021 meeting at 6:00 P.M. All right. We will move on to other items of business. Item number eight. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, tonight the council will consider adopting the fiscal year 2021 City of Greenville budgets, including the Shepherd Memorial Library, the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, and the Greenville Utilities Commission. Assistant City Manager Michael Cowan is a brief presentation to review with council.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Manager, Mayor, City Council. The budget presented for adoption tonight for all city funds totals approximately $421.1 million. The city funds total approximately $143.99 million with the general fund comprising approximately 62% of that total at $89.67 million. The general fund budget reflects the proposed adjustments discussed by council at the June 7th, 2021 council meeting. You can see here, properties consist primarily of property tax revenues, sales tax revenues, and the utility franchise tax revenue. In total, tax revenues comprise approximately 74% of the total budget. This budget does include a reduction of a half a cent in the property tax rate going from 49.45 cents down to 48.95 cents. The operating, uh, expense budget is balanced respectively at $89.67 million with personnel making up approximately two-thirds of our overall total budget. With that, I would answer. Any questions that you may have?
Any questions for Mr. Cowan or City Manager Ann Wall, since this is her budget? Amended budget? Any discussion? Anybody want to like to entertain a motion?
If to approve?
Anybody await?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right.
I thought it was a hearing. I thought we had to wait till Monday. Sorry.
No, no, we're out of the public hearings. Motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Proton Glover? You're muted.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes Mayor Connolly, six zero.
And just like that, in like less than two minutes, we just passed about $400 million worth of budgets.
He got it like that.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think this is a very ungovernmental action of us. It seems like all the governments I know just never pass budgets and they, they don't seem to get that. They just seem to go on with it.
And on that note, I'm going to go on to item number nine. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. At the Mar, at the May, um, council meeting, um, the council directed staff to do some research and analysis on an anti-demolition by neglect ordinance. The staff, um, Mr. Tom Barnett has a presentation that he will make about demolition by, anti-demolition by neglect. And then, um, we also have the Historic Preservation Commission Chair, Jeremy Jordan, on the, on the line, and he will also be prepared to, um, make some comments as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Barnett. Mr. Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Manager, uh, mayor and council. Uh, we're going to go over this presentation. Let me, uh, share my screen. Okay. So we're talking about anti-demolition by neglect as directed by council. So, uh, the, uh, anti-demolition by neglect is essentially a tool to have historic properties repaired in order to prevent further serious system failure and deterioration, which would likely result in demolition of the structure. So it deals with serious structural issues that are an immediate and imminent threat to the structural integrity. And, uh, there's a quote here that we've added, uh, from, uh, uh, North Carolina General Statutes that talks about what, uh, the inspectors look at when they're, um, assessing whether or not, uh, uh, a, a structure may need to be condemned, uh, because of serious decay. So that's just some, uh, some of the wording we have in the, in the legislation and what we look for when we're, uh, uh, taking into account the potential for, uh, demolition by neglect. So just generally, um, you know, obviously we would, if, if this is something a council wants to do, we would create an ordinance that would get very specific. But this is a general, uh, uh, assessment of how it works. A potential violation comes to, to our attention. We make an inspection. Uh, if we believe a violation is found to exist, uh, then we'd make contact with the property owners. Uh, at some point, a hearing would be held, evidence presented, and determinations made. Uh, at that point, we could issue notices of violations along with a fine. Uh, fines, um, could be assessed, uh, daily and could rise, uh, per day to a maximum. I've got an example of what we do, uh, with our minimum housing code. It can go from 50 to 100 to 250 over, over a period of days, um, uh, per violation. So there's an appeals process that would be part of it, uh, possibly to our Board of Adjustment, and then the various outcomes. So, you know, obviously our, our hope is that we get an owner to comply voluntarily and satisfactorily. Uh, if not, we can place fines and liens against the property to try to force the compliance. Uh, and the city is also authorized to make the repairs themselves. Uh, that's not something we normally do. The property owner, uh, based on the legislation, may seek relief based on financial economic hardship, uh, via an appeals process, again, to one of our boards, potentially BOA. If we were to do this ordinance, we would nail all that down very specifically. So, uh, in considering this anti-demolition by neglect ordinance, staff surveyed four comparable municipalities, and we actually reached out to a few others, and I'll get into that here in a second. Uh, uh, Les Everett, myself, and Tony Parker, uh, one of our planners, had conversations with the, um, the folks that deal with these issues in these communities. So the, the topics that we were talking about were the number of buildings in their districts, um, the landmarks, uh, who the enforcement entity was, number of cases, um, in some, we got, in general, the number of staff involved, uh, hardship evaluations, and then the appeals. So our first one is Rocky Mount. They have four local his, uh, historic districts, 543 buildings in those, and five local historic landmarks. The chief building inspector is responsible for the enforcement. They have no current anti-demolition by neglect cases. They have one full-time staff person, uh, that does that along with additional code enforcement and, uh, legal attorney staffing per the enforcement action. The cases are reported by private citizens or local groups. Uh, hardship cases are, hardship cases are vetted by the chief building inspector and a hardship review committee. Appeals are heard by the Board of Adjustment, and we do, uh, they do in-house rehab. So it appears that since 2009, the use of anti-demolition by neglect in Rocky Mount has been sort of taken over by code enforcement and the use of incentives. They used their ordinance 10 times in the past with little success. Uh, their ordinance has not been used for the past several years and, uh, seems to operate more as a reserve tool in their enforcement kit. So we'll move on to Wilson. We talked with Wilson. They have three local historic districts, 740 buildings, and six local historic landmarks. Uh, they have a, uh, HPC liaison and code enforcement responsible for the enforcement. There are no current anti-demolition by neglect cases. They have two newly created full-time positions that I have, uh, that work with HPC liaison on a citywide, again, not historic property only demolition. So theirs is much broader, along with additional code enforcement and then legal attorney staffing as needed per enforcement action. Cases are reported by private citizens or local groups. Hardship cases are heard by the HPC. Appeals are heard by BOA. Uh, the city has no housing rehabilitation specialists on staff. And they've sort of taken the carrot approach. They've created a loan fund for all interest loans offered and incentives to try to get properties, uh, fixed up. So they've applied their ordinance twice and had no success, uh, come out of that. They have an anti-demolition by neglect ordinance on the books. However, they've moved more to minimum housing code enforcement combined with incentives, which has been a more effective tool for them. Then we took a look at Little Washington. They have one local historic district that has 566 buildings, no local, uh, historic landmarks. Uh, they have a HPC staff liaison and code enforcement who are responsible for the enforcement of, of their, uh, ordinance. There are no current anti-demolition by neglect cases now. They have one staff person that does this and then legal representation as needed. Code enforcement and HPC staff report cases. Hardship cases are heard by HPC. Appeals are heard by BOA. The city has no housing rehab specialist on staff. So they appear to be using their ordinance more like a minimum housing code enforcement. That's the tactic they seem to take more than the anti-demo by neglect. They've had three cases, one of which went to trial and was finally resolved. They aggressively approach minimum housing violations and work with the property owners to correct any situations that need addressing. And then New Bern. We talked to New Bern. They have two local historic districts, 850 buildings, and they have no local historic landmarks. HPC, HPC staff liaison and chief building inspector are responsible for the enforcement there. There are no current anti-demo by neglect cases. The effective cost to them is that one staff person plus additional code enforcement and legal representation. So their code enforcement and staff liaison report the cases. The hardship cases are heard by HPC. Appeals are heard by the Board of Adjustment, and they don't do any in-house rehab. They, they seem to use their ordinance more than any other. We, in these conversations, we're sort of generalized with the staff that actually do them. So that's why you hear me speaking about seemingly, we didn't, you know, when we were speaking to them, we were just talking in general terms. They did tell us due to staffing changes, they, the use has been halted for the time being. New Bern.
I'm the only one that's pretty frozen?
No.
No. No, he's frozen.
Okay, now he's unfrozen. Okay, Tom, you were frozen, so you'll just need to start at the beginning of this slide.
This one right here, staff attempted? Okay, sorry about that. So we tried to reach out to Goldsboro, Fayetteville, and Wilmington. We were unable to contact Goldsboro folks and Fayetteville due to vacations and folks being out. But we did hear from Wilmington. So Wilmington does have an ordinance on the books, but again, they appear to use only code enforcement, and they do not involve their HPC in those cases. Here is essentially a rundown of everything I've just told you about, what each city is doing and how it affects them. So our conclusions, while many municipalities have this anti demo by neglect ordinance, after starting the program, they have evolved to the place where they don't use it very often. Instead, they rely much more on minimum housing standards as well as financial incentives to try to gain compliance. In thinking about what this might mean for us, and this is just something we, you know, this, this is something we thought would probably be the impact in Greenville if we were to do something like this. We're thinking it'd probably need two full-time planning staff positions and essentially what would amount to a halftime attorney's time as we would do, do the hearings and go through the legal process. So, and then the thought is-
Tom, where'd you come, where'd you get that? I mean, it sounds like that the entities that do have this don't do, you know, don't do a lot with it. And if that's the level of activity, how could it possibly take two full-time people?
Well, I, I guess the thinking is if we were going to pass an ordinance, we would probably go at it full-tilt and try to use it as a tool and make it very effective. So the thought is we need staff to be able to do that. Now, I, I get that I just told you that these other communities, while they have it, they've evolved to using minimum housing standards. But if we were going to pass it, if that's the will of council, then we would expect that we would actually work at it and try to implement it, you know, all the time.
I guess my question is, where'd you get, where'd you get the data to come up with two full-time staff positions? If none of these other entities had data to provide? I'm just curious where you, where you got the number?
Well, the halftime attorney, I think, is, is, is something that every other city is expending right now, however they're doing it, at least that much. The two full-time staffers, you know, we were looking at what it would, what it could potentially add if we were to actually do it, you know, in a, in a strong way. You know, assuming council passes, you know, wants us to create this ordinance and they adopt it, you know, staff here would then go about trying to implement it fully. And-
So is there like a number of cases per year you plotted out as being a likely, a likely model?
When we asked, when we had, obviously, we, well, I shouldn't say obviously. We met with the HPC board members this week, with four of them, and we're talking about potentially how many they thought might be coming forward. And it was quite a large number. So I'm thinking, you know, if we were to do this and move forward, the initial impact could be pretty great. Now, I don't know that it would keep up at that number over time, but I'm thinking for probably the first year or couple of years, it could be extensive. And it's, you know, this is an estimate.
What was, what was, what was, what's the number?
It was, uh-
How many cases does two full-time staff positions? How many cases, what is that, what does that translate to in terms of a caseload?
Well, so we were talking about twenty, in the high twenties is possible, the first round. So you, in order to hear the cases, there would, we would actually have to start having hearings, taking evidence, doing some investigation, obviously. And then there would be the appeals, potentially for economic hardship. And those were the basis for why we estimated some staffing needs.
Okay, thank you.
And again, it'll, it'll get, it will get much more precise if you all tell us to move forward. So the thought is potentially we could have as effective or perhaps even more effective results by using stronger code enforcement of the minimum housing standards and the historic district design guidelines, and potentially see if we could create a pool for incentives, if that would be a possibility, to try to get compliance that way instead. So at this time, staff recommends not to approve the development of an anti-demo by neglect ordinance and that we will take time to review minimum housing standards, how those are applied and enforced, as well as the historic district design guidelines. And with that, Mr. Jeremy Jordan is, I think, with us as well and is ready to make some comments, I believe.
Yes, I'm here. As Mr. Barnett said, my name is Jeremy Jordan, and I am the chair of the HPC this year. Other than myself, the commission consists of Dr. Kerry Carlin, Dr. Myron Casper, Dr. Justin Edwards, Mr. Roger Cammerer, Dr. Andrew Moorhead, Mr. Israel Mueller, Ms. Candace Pierce, Ms. Scott Wells, and Dr. Robert Wright. We do have a group that's committed to this work. We rarely ever lack a forum when we need to meet. Several of our members have served multiple terms, so we have a pretty good institutional memory. Myself, except for the mandatory year off between consecutive terms, I've pretty much been on the commission for something like 20 years. So my longevity has allowed me to see over time that we have had an ongoing issue with lack of consistent enforcement of our design guidelines. And it's nobody's fault particularly, but we've had more staff members assigned to us than I can even remember over the years, which doesn't help with momentum and consistency. I do have to say the staff currently working with us is fantastic. Also, I actually live in one of these properties, so I'm very familiar with the juggling act it can be to prioritize what needs to be fixed when, and what's, what's most important. And an important point to make here is that the average homeowner, who is doing the best they can to maintain their property and maybe needs to fix a piece of trim here or do a little paint there, is not something that we spend a lot of time worrying about on the HPC. What we do worry about, though, for, for instance, an example from the past, there was a rental home in the College New District where the owner stripped the interior of the building, including all the walls, took out the windows and left it open to the elements, and all without permits, mind you. And then came to us saying, well, there's no choice but to demolish this property. And then eventually, it was demolished and replaced with a modern, plastic-looking house to maximize rental potential in the historic district. There is a current situation where a rental property owner approached us with a problem of an ongoing leak with a large flat roof on the back of one of the houses. And they presented a, a design for a change to that roof that would be more functional. We actually wholeheartedly supported that change and approved it, but now we are several years later and the home is still sitting there occupied by renters with multiple tarps over the roof. So that's the kind of thing that we were worried about. And it really got us sort of sinking in this anti-demolition by neglect mode, which we, we've talked about several times in the past over the years and for one reason or another, not, never got as far as bringing it to council. So staff's evaluation is that beefing up the minimum housing standard enforcement along with the HPC guidelines would come closer to achieving the goal. I won't argue with them, they're the professionals. But what I would ask tonight on behalf of the commission is that you, as a council, give staff the support and funding that they say they need to achieve this. And I really do think that more consistent application of the minimum housing standards would benefit not only HPC's mission, but the whole city. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Jeremy, thanks so much for your work on HPC and for bringing this up. You know, I know when it came up to us in council, you know, before council, you know, after you made your resolution and we sent it back and asked staff to help you guys make a presentation on, on this. I guess I thought you would be making the presentation. Did, you know, did you guys work with staff and decide they'd do it? Is that the way it worked out?
Well, a few of us from the commission met with Tom on Wednesday of this week and looked at what the city staff had gathered and put together. And we talked about it from there and went forward with Tom making that presentation and then me adding on after him.
You guys met with Tom yesterday? That was the first time you, that was the first time they approached you on this issue?
Well, he did call me last week, but I was not able to get back to him and get the time together.
Okay, thank you. I'd want to say, it's not a question for Jeremy, but I, just a general comment about this. I think we've noticed a couple of different places where the, this, over the last few years, there's been a, an attempt to avoid enforcement actions, I guess, by city staff on housing issues. So we've seen it in West Greenville where, you know, lots of properties were, you know, being, you know, were clearly in violation of our planning codes, but were, you know, being, you know, there was, I think they, this, we talked about this several months ago. There was a real sense of, you know, we'd like to work with the homeowners and, and maybe that was, you know, maybe too much working with the homeowners because some of them clearly are not interested in working with us. And I understand now that there's been an initiative to perhaps, you know, actually get in and, you know, and bring enforcement actions against some of those. So I think we have, it sounds like we have the same issue in the historic district where potentially there are tools already in the staff's toolkit. And that seems to be what I'm hearing staff recommend, is we don't need any more tools. We already have the tools we need. What we need is permission to use them, I guess, is the, or the staff to fully implement them. So what is, I guess, Ms. Manager or Mr. Barnett, what is the, what is specifically that you're asking for here? If it's not a new, if it's not a new, if it's not a new tool?
Councilmember Smiley, we are just simply trying to respond to the request of the HPC, which the council asked us to provide some additional research. At this point, we're not asking, we're not, we, what we have simply done is recommend that the council not approve an anti-demolition by neglect ordinance.
Okay, well-
And, and, and I, I don't necessarily, I'm a little puzzled by this concept of that, about the avoidance of enforcement or lack of tools. I'm just a little confused about that.
Okay, well, several months ago, we had a large discussion on this council about the large number of houses around certain areas of the city that were clearly falling down, and staff had avoided pursuing condemnation hearing, actions against a great number of them for a number of years. And we spoke about it publicly on council, and I think other people have talked about it privately, that, you know, maybe we need to do more of that, right? That, you know, we can't, that if, if a private, if a community, if a house in a community is turning into a nuisance and the owner simply won't do anything to correct that, then at some point, it becomes the responsibility of, of the municipality to take enforcement actions. Is that, is, is that, is that clear? Is that the, do you remember those conversations?
Yes, Councilmember Smiley, I think, as I recall, it was about a specific house for which we brought a demolition order to the council and what we conveyed at the time, that there was some movement on foot on the council several years ago, certainly prior to my arrival at the city, that there was a feeling that we were doing too much demolitions in certain areas. And so, yes, the council indicated to us, go forth and do code enforcement, and I think that's what we're doing.
Okay. And I think HPC is basically saying the same thing, right? Is that a fair summary of Mr. Jordan about what you're saying? Is, if they don't need a demolition by neglect ordinance and they say they can do it with minimal housing with coding, and code enforcement, what you're asking for is staff to go forth and do it?
Right. I mean, I wouldn't begin to speak to the relationship between council and staff, but from the HPC perspective, and I probably only know this because of having been on the HPC so long, but over the years, we've had varying levels of, okay, someone's in violation. Okay, well, we'll, we'll contact them, we'll send them a letter. There've been various ways and methods of trying to bring a property into compliance. Sometimes we've issued fines, more often than not, we haven't issued fines. And it's never been completely clear when fines can be issued, exactly who issues the fines. Is it our job to see something? Does staff patrol the area to find things? Are we depending on other residents to, to submit problems? And then in, in the extreme cases that I mentioned as examples of, you know, someone purposely damaging a house or allowing it to fall apart to the point that it has to be demolished in order to get around the HPC rule, which would normally give a 365-day delay to a demolition, so that they can put something different there. And granted, that's an extreme case, but, you know, it's, you know, it needs to be brought up. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, close enough. And my, my goal here is, I mean, I'm not going to argue for an ordinance that staff says we don't need and the HPC agrees is, you know, maybe doesn't do what they thought it would do. But I do think that HPC, you know, one of our commissions is calling attention to a problem and, you know, and staff is saying that this is not the solution to the problem. So my question would be, well, what is a solution to the problem? I thought, and perhaps I misunderstood, Ms. Wall, I thought I understood Mr. Barnett say that a better enforcement of, better use of the, of the tools already in hand was the answer to the question. If I'm, if I was wrong about that, I'm sorry. I'll plead by all means, you know, clarify the comment. And so I just want to know, if we're not going to solve the problem this way, what way are we going to solve the problem?
I, I believe Mr. Barnett did speak about doing enhanced enforcement of the, with minimum housing code. I also believe we have talked about looking at the design guidelines and the enforcement mechanisms for the design guidelines.
And so that's my, so my question is, do you need anything from council in order to, to make that happen? And you don't have to answer that now, right? I mean- So thank you for the presentation. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood, you know, where this all, where we came from and where we're going. It doesn't seem like, Mr. Mayor, there's a motion to be made here, so I surrender the floor.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Yes.
A lot of the houses that are in disrepair or homeowner neglect that has moved away and don't really care about the property, they say just tear it down or whatever. and don't really care about the property, they say just tear it down or whatever. A lot of those properties are in the poor communities, in the African-American communities. And it's really bad when one landlord, he was keeping their property looking the way it's supposed to be looking, and they have someone that has a property right next to you that's looking like it's going to fall down, like if you touch it. So, and, and, and a lot of these houses are havens for drug dealers, prostitution and any, anything. So if that would take care of cleaning, I mean, I don't know, I, I think I lost wherever Mr. Barnett was when he was talking about hiring staff and all that. Did he talk about hiring staff to do this? Because right now, our code enforcements do this, but the problem being is that, I don't know what happened, but the city doesn't have any money for demolition. So if you don't set aside a budget for demolition and someone just walks away from a house and say, do what you want to do with it, it could sit there for about 10 years, you know? There's one house right behind me, the Fredale House, it's already come to us and it's on the 90-day wait to be done. And really, when it comes down to historic preservation, I believe in historic preservation, but it comes down to the neighbors that has to live in an area like that. I think that we have enough code enforcement officers to do, and they are doing the job because this house, I mean, if you look back at the history, how many times this house has already been to the city council, one person is saying, tear it down, and one person's not saying anything, so that owns that property. So I think, I, I really think that our code enforcement officers are doing the job, and, and it's just that we, you know, we don't have money for demolition, which, you know, I want to know what happened to that budget, because they had a budget. And I'm saying to Mr. Cowan, what happened to that budget? Because you can't, even in 90 days, you say, well, the city's got to eat the money, what is the cost of having a decent community?
Right.
How do you put a cost to it?
And Mayor Protam, what I can tell you is that if we do need houses that, if we do have houses just like the, the house on Clermont, for which they're on the 90-day demolition list, we will find the money to get those houses demolished. In fact, we demolished, essentially, the council approved two demolitions in the prior fiscal year. One was over by the Dream Park, right? And the other was the house on Clermont. I have asked the staff in code enforcement to give me the list of houses that we have, that we really do need to consider for demolition, and we're going to need to prioritize those houses. I will, will tell you that I think dating back until 2014, there was a lull in the house and how aggressively we pursued demolition. I believe we were doing code enforcement, but just how aggressively we were pursuing the demolition. I think there was some concern, particularly in the West Greenville area, where there were a lot of demolitions going on, that maybe we were doing it, maybe we needed to slow down a little. But I would completely concur with you that if we do not actively go out and do demolitions, it really, those houses, just like the house on Clermont, it's a blight for the neighborhood.
It is.
I will agree with you.
It really is.
That house is a blight, and we cannot wait for that 90-day period to expire so that we can demolish that one, as is the one that was over by the Dream Park, that was, was very problematic. So I asked staff for the list of demolition, of possible houses for demolitions, and I will certainly take back this concern about how aggressive we are related to code enforcement. I do think that we're going to have to be careful how we balance minimum housing code with historic preservation issues, because at some time, I just think that it's a very careful balancing act. But I will certainly work with Mr. Barnett and Mr. Graves and the code enforcement staff to make sure that we are doing what we can do.
Right. I believe that code enforcement is doing what they need to do, that, you know, we just, they just need to hear, you know, if a house needs to be brought down, the city will come with the money to pay it, because, you know, all, all the, what they've been hearing is just, we don't have the money, we don't have the money. So, and I think they've, they've done their job as far as identifying these homes, in particular, there's a lot of property that, that one person had, and it's across from the Dream Park, most of that property is across from the Dream Park, and that person passed, and the mom said, just do whatever you want to with it, because she, she's elderly, very elderly, and she's not coming back here anymore. So those are the things that we need to, to do. And, you know, when 90 days is up, 90 days is up. 90 days, I want to see these buildings torn down because it makes, that's just like you said, it causes blight in the community, it causes crime in the community, and it causes all kinds of things. I appreciate what historic preservation does, but within you of this community, which is a old, old community, that the people from the uptown Greenville, from Sycamore Hill, had to vacate so they could do a park. So I think that we need to really look at all, and, you know, I'm always, I know I'm always on your end about these vacant, about these vacant houses and what kind of problems they cause, you know, because it really needs to be taken, it needs to be taken in consideration, because I went by another house the other day, let's see, what did my husband tell me the name of that street was? I went by a house the other day, and I'll give the name to you and everything, and this house has been sitting there forever, and it has turned into a place that people hang out all the time. And, you know, people who have their own home, they want to sit there and look at that all day. My husband and I drove through there, and there were about 50 people sitting out on the sidewalk, and they have made it their sitting place. They got chairs and they sit on the sidewalks, they sit on everything, somebody had shoes for sale lined up in the street, and, you know, it, it was terrible, it was absolutely terrible. That house should have been gone a long time ago, because it's totally neglected, and I know the person that the property belongs to, and there is, I will, I will share that with you, and we're just going to have to, if people walk away and don't do anything to the properties, then we have to take the hard line and say, you know, this is causing problems in this community. Because I get calls from that community all the time, it's in District 1, but everybody knows me, so I get the calls. And a few weeks ago, I had to send the police around there because the people had moved from the big house and were sitting in somebody's yard, took her driveway. You remember, I talked to you about it.
I know.
Took her driveway and was sitting in her driveway, so, and you're afraid to go out and say anything, you know, you've got 10 or 15 men out there, and all this stuff's going on, and it makes it bad for the community, and I really want that area cleaned up, because there are some people that have been there in their homes 100 years, or, you know, or 50 years or whatever, and it really needs to be cleaned up in that area. And I'll give you the name of the street, I think it's-
And on the, and in the, and on, in the historic district, Councilman Glover is certainly right, they don't, there's not nearly so dire a situation. But again, they're not, you know, what HPC's asking for is not tens of thousands of dollars to demolish stuff, what they're looking for is staff to simply send out the fines, you know, and say, hey, you know, you're out of compliance, you know? Mr. Barnett had a list of fines that he laid, you know, that were appropriate to, and apparently were already on the books, I think he pulled the list from his existing fine structure. And I think what I'm hearing HPC say is that staff won't do it, and, or has been slow to do it, or is reluctant to do it, I don't mean to, I'm not trying to put legs, put words in my mouth, but-
I, I don't want to put it on staff, staff, staff does their work, they really do do their work in these communities, and I know that they're frustrated because they can't get these buildings torn down, and they're getting calls all the time. I have absolutely no problems with code enforcement, because, well, there's some problems, but anyway, I just want the houses taken down. It's not like there's a house that his historic preservation is looking at that could possibly be, be fixed, or a person just tear it apart and just let it fall down in front of you. So those are the issues with me. I, I have to give kudos to our code enforcement, because I don't think, I can't think of not one thing that I have addressed to them that had not been taken care of. And just let them do the job, let, let code enforcement do their job. Don't take over, and if they find somebody, make them pay the fine. Don't let them walk away and don't do anything, and the city chews up all the money. Okay, that's it.
So I have a question, Mr. Barnett, what is the demolition, demolition timeframes from notifying individuals and us finally doing something?
I, I'd have to get back you, back to you with the specifics, there, there are two different avenues that we, we approach a structure. One, and if I may, you know, staff has been actually very good at getting some owners to take down these, some of these structures at their own expense. I think over the last, something like five, maybe seven years, we've had 25 structures taken down at no cost to the city, as we've worked with the owners to get them down at their expense. And, and City Manager Wall has asked us to produce that list of structures for you, that we have, and we'll be bringing them back to her, and at the right time, we'll be sharing that list, I'm sure, with you all. But back to your question, there's a couple of different avenues. We normally start with trying to get the structure repaired and fixed up. Ultimately, if that doesn't work, we go after it and try to get it demolished. There, we have, we have to bring it back to council, there's a wait period of at least 90 days, and once that's up, we can take down the structure. In past years, as has been previously stated, we have not had a large budget to take down those structures where the owner won't pay for it and the city has to pay for it. But I know that's one of the things under discussion right now. So I can, I can agree that code enforcement is doing a very good job, working very hard in their districts to do this.
But Councilmember Daniels, we will, we will give you, send all the council a summary on the length of time for demolitions. It is a very lengthy, it is a very lengthy time that it takes to go through the process. City Attorney McGurk has some experience from Durham in doing some code enforcement work, and there are few opportunities in really, in very serious health and safety ways that we, we can sometimes short-circuit the process. But just to confirm, the council, there was a house on Clermont, we did take it for demolition, but we had to wait 90 days per the city ordinance until the, until we could actually demolish the house. And this house, it, it, it is really, it's, it's pretty significant. But we, what we will do for the council is we will bring you back a report on demolitions that will include the timeframes, it will include a list of structures, it will include the process that will be used, and whether or not we would recommend to the council any changes to our code. We will also bring to the council some information about minimum housing code and enforcement and how that works with the HPC.
All right. And also too, you know, that, and I don't know how many of you have heard of the broker winner theory, you know, it, it creates crime, it's to a neighborhood. So what we're doing is trying to keep down and try to, so that people who do own their homes, that take care of their homes, will have a nice place to live. And also, and my husband just gave me the name of the street, it's Ward Street.
Ward Street, yes, ma'am.
And it's the one that's, it's closer to Elizabeth Street, Ward Street. But you, you can't miss, it's right behind that store on Fifth Street.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Am I still allowed to talk?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you if you would have anything else to say, since I, I seem to have dragged this straight, sorry about that.
Well, I thought I was done, but Ms. Glover actually stirred something else in my thoughts. And I, I will say, I mentioned I live in a historic property, I actually live in West Greenville, in Ms. Daniels' district, and I know exactly what you're talking about, those people sitting in the driveway and blocking the road, hanging out and all that stuff, and I was gonna say it is on Ward Street.
It is on Ward Street.
Yeah. But what she, when she was talking about, you know, the hardworking people that maintain their property and then, you know, they have a nice yard and everything, and then you've got another property owner next door that doesn't do the same thing, that, I'm agreeing with everything Ms. Glover says, because I live over here and I see it, but I'm trying to speak on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, and that same thing applies in the historic district. It's, in order to have a vital and successful neighborhood anywhere, you've got to have people living there, or at least owning the properties, that care about the property and will keep it up. And nobody wants to buy a property or move into a place and invest in it if they know that the, the house next door is going down and nothing's being done about it. And I, I don't mean to imply that all the staff is not doing their job, because I know they are, I see code enforcement driving around all the time. I think one thing definitely that has been brought up to some of the HPC members is the City Compass app, where citizens report things, and I think probably it's just a matter of the way the app works, sometimes something will show as completed and the citizen don't, won't actually see that anything has happened. So, and I'm sure that behind the scenes, there's something is happening, or they're trying to do something or whatever, but to the citizen who reported it, all they see is it's been marked completed. So that, that was just another thing I wanted to bring up. But for whatever it's worth, I and HPC support anything that staff asks for to, you know, to help improve with code enforcement and certainly our historic preservation guidelines. And I think I'm finished.
Thank you, Jeremy, I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a discussion of the low-speed vehicle ordinance, and Councilmember Brian, Councilmember Meyerhafer asked to have that added to the agenda. Councilmember Meyerhafer?
He's gone.
I'll pass, it's late. Just kidding. Had I known this was going to be this heavy of an agenda, I may have added it to, asked to have it to, added to a different agenda. Just wanted to have a, at this point, a very brief conversation about this, check the appetite of other council members, I have actually had a conversation with another council member about this, and I'm sure he'll chime in here, but it's, it struck me just from a couple of personal experiences, just being uptown, and if you wanted to go from one part of uptown to another, let's just say you're on Dickinson and you wanted to go to Subdogs, just for example, or, or to the, or to campus, it's, sometimes it can be too far to walk, sometimes it's too short to call a cab or an Uber. And from experiences in other towns, and I know, I believe, City Manager went with me to Greenville, South Carolina, they allowed in their downtown area the use of golf carts to help transport people through their downtown area. They were very quick, efficient, easy, and I was curious about having something like that here. I believe there's an expanded view of that, and I don't know if Councilmember Bell wants to chime in here, but have we ever had any other conversations about this, doing something like this in the uptown area or beyond? Is it feasible? Do we need to get the, I'm sure we'd have to check some, whether or not they need to be street legal and safety ramifications with the police and all that good stuff, but it's something I think could be beneficial for the businesses uptown, for the people that are walking around uptown and would rather just jump in a little golf cart to bounce from one end to the other. That's all I had, if anybody else wants to chime in. If anybody else wants to chime in.
Yeah. City staff, is, has there been any work on city staff's part about identifying, you know, potential geographical areas, areas that, you know, this could be implemented? Uh, I think outside of the uptown area, there's a number of neighborhoods close to uptown that could benefit that are low speed streets anyway. You know, majority of everything inside Greenville Boulevard towards uptown is 35 and under, obviously without like 10th Street and Greenville Bul- Boulevard being included. Um, but, uh, you know, what comes to mind in my district specifically is like Cypress Glen, a lot of the residents there have golf carts that they, you know, move around in their specific neighborhood with. But, you know, definitely I could see them being interested in, you know, going to pick up their, their pharmaceuticals, grabbing a bite to eat, going and doing shopping in uptown. So have we done any research on the ability to get this going outside of just uptown?
Um, uh, Councilmember, um, Bell and Councilmember Meyerhofer, um, both pre-pandemic, we were having some conversations about, um, um, there, there would need to be some ordinance changes regard, regarding allowing certain kinds of these low speed vehicles to be on city streets. There's also some, um, parameters or perspectives of whether or not if they were to be for hire vehicles, like a, you know, you would hire them like you would, uh, Uber or a, or taxi. So we've done some very preliminary work about an ordinance. I don't believe that we've identified geographic areas as much as the ordinance, um, city, um, about, uh, about the ordinance to make, uh, uh, the rule that would allow it so that you could be, uh, use that vehicle on a city street. Now, we're happy to bring that, if that's the, if that's the desire of the council, we're happy to bring you all back some ordinances so you could take a look at it and just explain to you sort of the nuances of the, of those changes. If that's the desire of the council.
And somebody just, um, I, I, I don't know if they want me to say their name, but, um, I referenced Greenville, South Carolina. I just received a text.
Which was the Chamber Inner City Visit, right?
Yeah, that's right. So that was really cool to see that. And then somebody just sent me an article that they do this in Chattanooga, Tennessee as well. And they have a, uh, I think it's called the, uh, really catchy name here, the Chatty Wagon for Chattanooga, Tennessee. So for city staff, if you want to look up what they're doing there, um, that, that, there's two, uh, cities that are doing something like this, help people getting, getting around in the, in, uh, downtown area at least.
Would we, would we, would we start with a certain amount of golf carts and see like a trial period and then increase it as time moves on?
There's, there, there's a, like, like I'm, I'm down at the beach right now and there's, there's beaches all, you know, it's in North Carolina, there's beaches all across the state that, you know, allow, you know, state law allows those golf carts to be, you know, on, on the streets in those municipalities. And, you know, people use them pretty much for the exact, uh, purpose we were discussing. You're going to grab groceries, quick bite to eat, things like that. Um, so, so I would, I would see it as, you know, it could potentially be for recreational use, uh, also as a for hire service. So yeah, we might would wanna, I don't know if we would want to limit the amount of people that could do it for hire. Um, but I, I would imagine it being for recreational use and for, you know, for hire.
So, uh, so I'd just like to clarify that there, that, uh, that we would need this low speed vehicle ordinance to allow these vehicles to operate on city streets. If the council is desiring of developing a program in which the city would own and run it, that's a completely different question that we were not anticipating that we would review. We were just going to look at the idea of, of what would we need to do to permit somebody to drive one of these vehicles on city streets and what would we need to be able to do to allow, um, somebody possibly to make it for hire? I, I do know that at one point, I think what kicked it off before pre-pandemic was there was a period of time that, um, the uptown organization was looking at some way to ferry people around or move people around in the uptown area. Um, and they were looking at one of those vehicles. Did that answer your all's questions? Councilmember Ma- Daniels, did that answer your question?
Well, not exactly. How many would we get started with? If we?
Okay, well, we had not anticipated that the city would purchase the vehicles, which would be a completely, that, that we only anticipated, uh, what we had begun to look at was if somebody else wanted to run a program, what would it, um, what would we have to do to authorize the use of the vehicle on the street? If you, if the council wants us to look at a program, we are certainly willing to look at a program. We can do that and bring back what all of that would mean for the city.
My initial thought was this, this was going to be some sort of private entity that was gonna be taking care of it, not, not only taxpayers' dime.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, I would tell you that cities have authority to re- regulate taxi cabs, which are for hire vehicles and to place caps on taxi cabs. So you could, if this low speed for hire vehicle business was allowed within the jurisdiction, you could put a cap on the number of vehicles or businesses that could operate to see how it went first.
Yeah, I presume they'd need to apply for a license and a permit and all that good stuff.
Exactly. And get checked out by the police and all of that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
If, if there are no objections to staff, you know, furthering research on this and bringing us back some ideas, you know, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I, I don't necessarily think you, if, if I can just see that there's collective interest in the council, we're happy to do the work. And is that what I'm saying?
I'm good.
I see heads shaking. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We're good to go.
All right. All right, we'll move on to item number 11. I think our consultant might be thinking twice about accepting the city of Greenville at 9:41 PM and they're up.
And it's the last one.
I guess, um, we probably should turn it over to Mr. McGirt for the introduction there.
Yes. Mr. McGirt.
Thank, thank you, Adam Manager. Uh, Mayor and Council, this item is entitled Consultant Status Report, uh, 2021 Municipal Election and Redistricting. Uh, as you know, the council recently engaged, uh, Tharrington Smith Law Firm as its consults, consultant for the redistricting. Uh, tonight we are joined by Mr. Adam Mitchell of Tharrington Smith Law Firm and Blake Esselstyn. I hope I got that last name right. He's a demographer. And these gentlemen will update the council on the pending legislation, uh, Senate Bill, uh, 722, uh, and municipal elections and whether or not they will be delayed. And also discuss the redistricting process as it relates, uh, to the upcoming, um, municipal election, when, whenever that will occur. But anyway, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Esselstyn.
Uh, well, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. Certainly acknowledge that it's late in the evening and you all have had a lot of important business before you. Uh, redistricting is, is a, is a big topic. It's an important topic. It's generally speaking, a time sensitive topic. The good news is that there's no action required of you this evening. However, uh, we can, if you wish, get into at least a preliminary discussion of criteria to use for redistricting and action could be taken on that. But our primary objectives are to give you an overview of the redistricting process, to give you a little preview as far as what might be coming down the road in regards to redistricting and to talk about the timeline. So Blake, if you can go to our next slide, that would be great. So what is redistricting? Simply put, you all have districts in your city. You all run from districts and only voters who live in those districts can, can vote for you. And every 10 years, when the census comes out, we need to redistrict or rebalance the district to comply with a constitutional principle called one person, one vote. And what that's saying is that the relative voting weight or voting strength of a resident of, uh, one district should be as close to equal as possible to a resident of another district. And, and just to use an extreme example to illustrate the point, if District A has 10 voters and District B has 100 voters, one voter in District A makes up 10% of the electorate, whereas one voter in District B only makes up 1% of the electorate. So that voter in District A has a much weightier, uh, much weightier vote. In the local government context, you do get a little bit of flexibility. You don't have to be exactly equal, which, which for state legislature and Congress, you do need true equality. And so the rule that's developed in the courts for local government entities like the city is that we need to have all districts within a range of plus or minus 5% of the ideal district size. And the way we come up with the ideal district size is simply to take the total population of the city divided by the number of districts and that's the ideal district size. So to determine whether or not you need to redistrict, there are two criteria. One is that you have true electoral districts and we already know that's the case. And the second is that when we get that new 2020 census data, and we don't have it yet, your current districts don't, uh, aren't still within that plus or minus 5%. If all of your districts were to be within that plus or minus 5%, you would not need to redistrict and we could use those districts for another 10 years. It never happened in my experience that a jurisdiction has not needed to redistrict that I've worked with. I'm sure that there are, uh, examples where, where that has been the case. But we are expecting that you all would need to redistrict. And, uh, Blake is going to show you based on population estimates. And I want to highlight, these are estimates, they are not official census data and we cannot rely on them to redistrict. But nevertheless, just to illustrate the concept, we took these estimates and applied them to your current districts to see what things were looking like as far as that plus or minus 5%. So Blake, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Adam, and good to see you all tonight. So this is, uh, presumably a map that should be familiar to folks. This is one that I got from GIS staff and the organization and showing the current districts, uh, shaded by color. And the same colors on the, the table on the right, I'm sorry, the chart on the right indicate the populations based on these estimates that Adam mentioned. And again, these are estimates, these are, some smart people gave their best guess, uh, for what each census block would have as its 2020 population. So, um, we recognize that there, they may be off, but they probably give us some indication of what the populations look like. And you can see that District 1, according to the estimates, would have the lowest population. District 4 would have the highest and the others are, are somewhere in between. And just to illustrate what Adam was talking about before, this solid line here would be the ideal population. And then the two dash lines would be plus or minus 5%. So you can see the ideal is, uh, in the neighborhood, it's between 18 and 19,000, little over, I, I think. It's, yeah, in the neighborhood of 18,000. And these, uh, are plus or minus 5%. And you can see that actually three of the districts would fall within that range and District 5 would actually be quite close. But District 1 and District 4 fall well outside. And since District 1 and District 4 are not adjacent, it's not just a matter of transferring some, some blocks from one to the other. Because as we'll talk about, uh, or as we can talk about, one of the typical criteria is called contiguity, where you want to keep each district having an intact shape and not have it be, uh, made up of separate chunks divided by other districts. And I will turn it back over to Adam.
So what does redistricting look like? What, what is the process? There's, there's actually very little in, in the law, in the statutes that describe what the process should look like. But, uh, there's some key principles and there's some practices that we've developed over time that we think work quite well. Uh, so just to run through those, the, the process, just like tonight, is going to take place in open public meetings. There, uh, is, is really no scenario in which redistricting will be discussed in closed session. It's an open meeting item and public input frankly is, is important. Uh, at least once during the process, and, and there's some options as far as when we want to do that, there will be a formal public hearing prior to the adoption of the plan. Before we start drawing plans for you, we want to know your criteria. What is important to you? Blake mentioned one, contiguity, um, compactness, keeping communities of interest together, following that, uh, natural boundaries or, or roadways. And, and we want, we want to know what are your priorities as the council before we go back and start the, uh, the map, the map making process? We will then bring you, once we have those criteria, alternative plans for your consideration. We'll discuss them in a, in a public meeting, multiple public meetings if we need to. And what we'll be looking for is, uh, is consensus from the council on what we refer to as a preferred plan. And once that occurs, that's a natural place in my opinion to have a public hearing. You could have already had one, but once consensus has coalesced around a preferred plan, what a lot of jurisdictions will do at that point is schedule a hearing, uh, put it up on the website, put notice out in, in the local newspaper and invite the public to come give input on that preferred, uh, plan that's under consideration. We can certainly adjust it as needed. We can move forward and we will prepare, uh, whatever resolutions you need, all the paperwork. You all will approve that and then once it's adopted, we can send your maps out to the Board of Elections, the GIS Department, uh, and the like. Next slide, Blake. And, and so I think this is important just to bear in mind that you as the council are the entity that redistricts. We're here to help. We're here to support you. We're here to provide you legal advice and technical advice and map making skills. But it is the council that redistricts itself as an entity. You don't need authority, uh, from anyone to start the process. You already have it. You don't need approval from anyone other than yourselves to finalize the process. And that's a change from 10 years ago. 10 years ago, Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act was still in place and that required a redistricting plan, any, uh, electoral change to get preclearance from the United States Justice Department. Currently, that is no longer on the books. There is discussion in Congress a- about that and we will certainly keep an eye on that. But at the moment, there, uh, is no requirement to get permission from any other entity other than yourselves regarding your final plan. Okay, so now, timing. In, in, uh, in a normal year, we would be in the thick of things right now. We'd have the census data, we would be discussing plans and we would be quickly moving towards adoption. But as we know for a number of reasons, the census is, uh, delayed. And that has caused lots of, uh, head scratching and, and hand wringing and we still don't know the final, final outcome, but we think we do, which is, uh, Senate Bill 722. And the current status of Senate Bill 722 is that it has passed both the Senate and the House and it has been presented to the governor for his signature. So it is not the law of the land at the moment, but we think it very likely will be. And in its current format, which has changed significantly, Senate Bill 722 delays the 2021 municipal election. A prior version of Senate Bill 722 gave us the authority, gave you the authority to decide whether or not to delay the 2021 election. It didn't really give a lot of guidance as far as how to decide that. But this version is much more certain. If the law is signed, the election is delayed. Your terms are extended until new members are elected and sworn in in 2022. Want to mention a caveat to that, which is that you have an option to conduct the elections for your at-large members if you wish this year. And that would be an affirmative action you would need to take. You would need to vote on that, uh, pass a motion and then you would need to mo- notify the County Board of Elections at least five, five days prior to the opening of your regular filing period. So that's something for your consideration. Uh, the default, as I would describe it, would be to delay everyone, but by affirmative action, you could go ahead with your at-large races this year if you so chose. Uh, what the bill asks is that we adopt new districts by November 17th, 2021. It requires that we adopt new districts no later than December 17th, 2021. And the election will be on the date of the March 8th, 2022 primary. The filing period will depend on whether or not you hit the November target or whether you fall back or whether you fall back to the December target. But in either event, the election will be on March 8, 2022.
And
Could I interrupt real quick? I'm sorry, guys, this is Councilmember Meyer-Over. Can I interrupt real quick, guys? So you're talking about a March 8, 2022 primary? And then they will take office? The winner would take office on what day? Do we, do we know that yet?
Uh, no. I would, I would, what I would imagine is that the election is on March 8. Whatever process there is to, to canvass, to certify, and then you would have a, an organizational meeting as soon as possible thereafter to swear in your new member, your new members or your, your returning members. But I, I'm not aware of any specific guidance that, that gives a, a hard date. I can, if I, if I come across something, if there's something out there that I'm not thinking of, I will definitely let you know.
And then, I would say, that would add is state law says the council shall fix the time and the date of its organizational meeting. So it seems to me that the council may have some discretion to set that time. You know, it's like, for instance, you're, if this was a normal year, your election would be in November, and the organizational meeting would be the first meeting in December. So I would think you would probably have an organizational meeting in April to swear in the council members.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to be sort of covering some of what, what Adam covered earlier. And just in, in a way that's, that's visual, I find it helpful to be able to visualize these, these sequences. So at the cross, at the, at the top, by the way, I, it's purely coincidence that these are kind of pirate colors, the purple and black and gold. I, I had created this before I was even thinking about Greenville. So, but seemed appropriate. And at the top, you can see we're, we're spanning from June through January of 2022. I did not include the, the March date on this just to allow it to, to have more space to spread out because there's, there's a fair amount going on here. So you can see today, the 17th, and it's interesting that today is the 17th, and some of the very key deadlines that we'll be looking at moving forward are also the 17th of the month. So we've essentially, the, as, as Adam said, what the preferred deadline for completion would be November 17. That's five months from today. But there is the possible fallback. But let me step through these one at a time. So essentially, before the starting gun, which is the release of census data, we've got a little more than eight weeks for preparation. And this is a time when, as Adam said, it, it could be used for discuss, discussion of criteria and things like that. The Census Bureau has said that their initial release of data will be no later than August 16. And I've written here that this is called legacy format. And some people see that, and they may think that this means it's antiquated data. But all that that means is it's, they're providing, they know that a lot of people want to get their hands on the data as soon as possible. So they're providing an untabulated sort of raw data set. It's the same data as will be coming out in its final format in September. It's just a question of how it's being delivered. In September, they're going to provide a much more user-friendly, separately tabulated format, including a lot of instructions and things like that. But for expert users, they can digest. This, this is sort of a, a more raw format that is what they used to deliver, which is why it's called a legacy format. So what that means is that there's a reason this is about two weeks, this, this green period here, is that there's going to be some time for processing. It, it will take a little time to digest that and get it in the format that will, can then be plugged into the mapping software. And so that's, that's in the neighborhood of two weeks. So we're looking at, starting at the end of August through the, the preferred deadline, at least the legislature's requested deadline of November 17. So again, you can see that's about 11 and a half weeks. The final delivery of the census data should come out in the second half of September, but that really shouldn't affect this process much. You may be wondering why it's November 17. If filing typically doesn't happen until early December, the legislature has built in time for the Boards of Elections to do the processing that they need to do before filing to make sure that they know, you know, where candidates need to, to be and that candidates' addresses are matched with proper districts and that kind of thing. So there's about two and a half weeks of processing time, and then the filing period. And then there's, there is this fallback, the longer period here that, that Adam referenced. So these last three lines are showing what the fallback would allow an additional four weeks or so of time to finish redistricting. And then again, a processing period for the Boards of Elections and a shorter fallback filing period.
So before we open up, up the floor, I do want to address the, the possibility, seems unlikely, but the possibility that Senate Bill 722 is not, does not become law. And if that's the case, I have a straightforward recommendation, which is that you have your election this fall using your current districts. And it's really based on the fact that there's no other option. It's, it's not ideal by any means. But without the authority to delay the election, without the data necessary to redistrict, the only option I see is, is to go ahead. Again, unlikely, but I did just want to address that because it, it is a possible scenario. So we'll pause here. That, that's our introductory presentation about redistricting and about timing. As I said, we can move on to discuss criteria if, if the council wishes, but wanted to make sure that any questions folks had about this initial set of slides and topics that we could address.
Any questions?
Um, just in fairness to the mayor and the at-large member, if there was an appetite for letting them have their election, we'd have to basically act on that almost immediately, right? Because we'd have to, um, they would have to, we'd have to tell the county prior to, you know, July 15th or so that, that we were going to have that election, right?
I would agree, yes.
Okay. I don't know that they want to. I mean, I just, since it is an option and they don't really, they may or may not be able to fully voice their, their desires.
Hey. I'm, I'm, I'm a team player. I'm in it for the team.
Why did your computer die when you said you were a team player? You're back.
I'm back. Did anybody else say anything while I was gone? Any other questions? We good?
I assume they have additional presentation. They seem to imply it, yeah.
That's what I was figuring. So I was just making sure there was any other discussion.
So would you like to move forward to a discussion of redistricting criteria? And it, it either can be just a presentation and brief discussion of them, or if the council wishes, you can give us guidance. You can adopt criteria today so that as soon as that data that Blake just referred to comes out, we can, we can hit the ground running. Absolutely not required, but, but it is an option.
I'm gonna just say what I'm thinking right now. It's like 10 o'clock at night. We've been sitting through this for four hours. I don't know if this would be the best time for us to think of the criteria moving forward, making that a rash decision.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so.
And it looks like, it looks like we have a pretty lengthy period of time. You know, of course, we want to do it as, as fast as we can, but we do have a little bit of time before that data comes out.
I would agree, yes.
Would you like to have a, a brief presentation just as sort of what, an introduction to what the typical criteria might look like?
Yeah, man, I don't think it would hurt.
Okay, let's, let's just run, run through that and then with the understanding that we'll, we'll come back another time to discuss in more depth and adopt. So the, the, the first couple of, of criteria are, are really grounded firmly in, in the law. And, and the first is population equality. We talked about plus or minus 5%. But we also can say things like, we think that it should be as close to equal as possible. We, we want to, we want to push as close to that ideal number as possible as opposed to being on the, the outer, outer edges of that plus or minus 5%. Or, we'll mention this below, we may want to intentionally over or underweight certain areas to account for known or expected future development. Now, if we do that, it still needs to be within the plus or minus 5%. We can't go beyond that. But that is something that we can be mindful of and pay attention to. We need to consider the Voting Rights Act. Like I said, Section 5 is, is not currently with us, but Section 2 is. And, and Section 2, the simplest way to, to summarize it is that it prohibits taking actions that would discriminate against minority and language minority voters. So that's something that just needs to be in our mind as we go through the, the redistricting process. Contiguity, we understand that in the municipal context, satellite areas will be exceptions. Preserving administrative areas, and that could be things like precincts, central business district, et cetera. Preserving communities of interest, and that could be neighborhoods, other areas with demographic, cultural, historical, or economic characteristics. As the slide says, it can be a little bit more nebulous, and it may be something that comes up through public engagement or through your representation of your various districts and the community. Major, major physical features, waterways, railroad tracks, and the major roads. To the extent you want us to keep those in mind, we, we absolutely can. We already talked about the, the accounting for future growth within the five, the 5% range. Compactness is one. Preservation of the core existing districts. If you like your current districts, we can try to work from them. Or you can say we want to go a clean slate approach and, and start from scratch. And lastly, and again, these are not the only criteria. This is just meant to get the conversation started. It's a standard list. To avoid the pairing of incumbents in the same district is, is an appropriate and legal criteria. So I will stop there. And Mr. Mayor, in your discretion, if you would like for there to be any discussion or if we want to just stop and come back at, at a future date for further discussion. Blake, did you want to just briefly touch on precincts before, before we wrap up?
Uh, I could go either way. I, if people might have seen that I skipped over some maps. These are just maps to show, as one example, one of the criteria that Adam spoke of was preserving administrative areas, trying to keep those intact. And one that is often cited as a, a reasonable choice for administrative areas to sort of use as larger building blocks than actual census blocks, which are quite small. Precincts tend to have a few thousand people. And the gray lines here represent the precincts. The, the corporate limits of the city of Greenville are included in, by my count, about 30 precincts. Some only partially fall within the precinct, but some entirely. And you can see that under the current districts, for example, this precinct here, I believe this is Greenville number 6, has three different council districts in it. So folks who are voting at the same polling place might actually, you know, they're, they're voting for three different council members. So again, and this, this does not have to be taken into account, but it's just one example of, of something that traditionally other local governments and, and even state governments, that actually the, the legislature has been taking very seriously the preservation of precincts and minimization of, of splitting of precincts. But at, at this level, it is not something that needs to be done. But in a future conversation, we could talk more about whether this makes sense for you all, especially given the other criteria you're considering.
All right, well, does anybody from the council have any questions or discussions? Immediately?
My, my only concern is that, you know, we're going to have maybe one meeting before August 16. And so my thought would be, you know, we need to make sure that we're ready to move, you know, to make any decisions that have to be made, you know, right there at that meeting. And, you know, I don't know if there's a public input process that staff could set up ahead of that or something like that. I'm not necessarily suggesting. I'm just trying to think, what would we want to have done before August 15? Because if we want to do it, then we got to start talking about it. We're not going to have a lot of time, and we don't meet in July. We will meet Monday, so we have, you know, we got that, but.
Maybe, uh, is there a way that we could kind of have maybe like a refresher or something like that? Maybe between now and our first meeting? And maybe have like group sessions where we can go over this individually or something?
Are you asking, are you asking me that, or?
Asking our staff, like?
Got it.
Manuel and Ann.
Mayor, I do our best to inform you of, of, of what's possible and try to get as much done as we can. It's informing you all individually what's, what's going on. And, you know, we, we do have a meeting on Monday. We're going to probably recess that and vote on Wednesday. And then after that, I don't think we meet again until August. And I think the consultant, the main thing that they're trying to, to get us to commit to is a criteria, which maybe that could be done at the first meeting in, in August. But, Mr. Mitchell, are there any other things we need to have done besides the criteria early on?
I, no, I would exactly agree that that's, that's the one thing we want to have in place before that legacy census data comes out.
Okay, well, that would give us sufficient time. Then we could do that at the beginning of August. It may not be a bad idea to maybe have some type of refresher, maybe even at a workshop or something like that, just to go over it and refresh us so we're ready to go. I, I mean, I just, I would hate to, to put together the criteria and rush it together right now at 10 o'clock at night with having sufficient time to go over everything.
And, and what, go ahead, Manager, please.
So Mayor Connolly and the rest of the council, we have, we have a workshop on, on your meeting on Monday, August the 9. We could certainly have this item teed up and make sure that we give you, the council, plenty of opportunity to review any projected criteria. We could include that in the agenda packet. And then the council could be in a position to discuss that on August the 9, which, which would be the first time the council would gather in face-to-face since the beginning of the pandemic.
Right. That may not be a bad idea then. Unless the council objects to that, I think that'd be a good idea.
And the, the clarification that I was going to offer is just to remember that while the data are going to be released, the census is, has promised no later than August 16. And I should say, there is the possibility that a lawsuit originating out of Alabama could affect that. There, there, there is, there is one federal court lawsuit that could potentially throw a wrench in that timing. But the expected date is no later than August 16. But again, there is going to be that chunk of time that will be needed to process it. So it's not like the 16th is sort of a starting gun after which I'll be able to say, all right, here's how the districts are at a balance. It's going to take days, if not a, a week, to, to get all of that kind of digested and in the format that I need. So.
I just think it would be helpful if we had laid out the criteria before we get the data. So that the criteria, establishing the criteria is independent of whatever the data might show.
We're not going to get the data until, what, September 30? I think it gets sent to the state.
He's going to have, he says, he said that there'll be, the data in raw form is available longer before August 15?
Yep. So it's, it's been a, it's been a confusing presentation because they, and I apologize, there's, I'm on downtown Asheville, Patton Avenue, and someone is revving their engine. The, the, the data that comes out in August is essentially the same data that will be coming out in September. It's just in a kind of unpolished, less easily digestible format. So go ahead, Adam.
I, I think that the target, I think that I, I think that the target, I think that i- if things do not change, that we will be ready to start drawing districts around the first week in September. I think that gives time for the legacy data to come out, for Blake to do the tabulation that he needs to do. And so that first week in September is when we hope to be in a position to actually start drawing maps. So it is true that that's really, that that's the starting gun there, not, not the August 15th.
Well, actually, you know, once that data is released in August 15th, it is now public, and it's now subject to analysis by anybody. So it doesn't, you know, you, we're paying you guys to do the analysis, but there's nothing to keep somebody else from doing the analysis, either for themselves or being provided the analysis by somebody else. Um, and I think it would be, you know, a good, a good process for us to have established criteria prior to that data being public and there being any potential of somebody arguing for a criteria on the basis of data that is of the current, the new data. That's my concern.
I agree.
So I, I do also want to point out to the council that you, the council will have a meeting on June the 21st that, um, will, and that agenda on the 21st will have the public hearings that you all had tonight, plus an annexation and a closed session item. And then you will reconvene that meeting for the 23rd of June, that Wednesday evening, next Wednesday night, in order to hear the one item for which you have a public hearing on the 21st. So if the council, if you do not want to wait until August, that is the council's prerogative about when to hold the discussion, you would have time to do, might conceivably have time to do it next week. But if, if, if that, if you all would like us to put it on the agenda, I think that we would need some direction from the council so that we could have any information prepared to, um, to be able to share with the council.
Mr. Mayor, I think that there's some value in having the, the public part of this take, you know, be not compressed, you know, and if we were to get started on this, you know, next, next week, then that gives the public a long time to, to weigh in. That's probably true, even if we start in August, I'm just.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know what, I mean, now and when the data comes out in August 15th.
I'm sorry, you, you broke up there. What was your question? What was your comment?
I just don't know how much, what, what would they weigh in on between now and August 15th if we, if we pass the criteria immediately?
I agree. I think maybe we, you know, maybe we need to. Yes, we need some input from the public. I just, I'm, I'm kind of at a loss as to, you know, how to initiate it.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with August, doing August and, and, and making a decision. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks. Anybody?
Uh, you're, you're talking about after we get the data, that's fine by me.
Well, I mean, my thought is like doing it August 9th at our, our workshop, having a discussion on it then. That way it's, it's prior to the August 15th timeframe when the, the data comes out. That way it's all taken care of and, you know, honestly, I mean, I feel like we're kind of rushing everything right now to get it in as quickly as possible.
That's fine. Let's do it in August. That makes sense.
Fine by me. I'm good with it.
I'm okay with it.
I agree as well.
All right. Do we need anything else? Are you guys good? Are you, more presentation?
No, sir. We are all through. We, we appreciate you sticking with us and, um, we'll keep working with your fantastic staff and, and, uh, be, we'll be back when you need us.
I'm, I'm impressed that you have those positive comments at, uh, 1019.
I've been to lots of late meetings, but.
This is not normal for us. We're usually two hours or less.
Yeah, it happens. It happens. All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item, um, the Historic Preservation Commission passed a resolution requesting funding for the potential designation of five city-owned properties as local landmarks. Councilmember Smiley asked to put this item on the council agenda. I will turn it over to councilmember Smiley.
Um, I guess our standard procedure here is we're supposed to, um, ask staff to, you know, explore exactly what that resolution would mean and provide us with, um, in, information and guidance. I mean, it's, isn't that what we did? Isn't that what we set up last time? I think that the, these, um, there's widespread support in the community for these landmarks, and they're all city-owned, so I don't think we have to, you know, you know, um, I don't think we have to, um, you know, it can be an action of the city council. So, uh, so I moved that, I guess I moved that we, that staff prepare an ordinance to that effect, to the effect of the, of the, of what's council, what the HPC has recommended. Where do we get to say that? I mean, can we just approve their action?
Okay, um, uh, uh, just to confirm, the resolution requested funding in order to prepare, I, uh, to do a study of these local landmarks is what the, what the resolution passed by the HPC requested. Is that what you are? I, I'm going to read the title of the resolution that the HPC passed. The HPC passed a resolution of the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Greenville, requesting the city council of the City of Greenville to facilitate the appropriation of resources so as to allow the commission to make or cause to be made an investigation and report to the historic architectural, prehistoric, educational, or cultural significance of each of five designated city-owned properties for consideration as local historic landmarks.
What are those surveys? Those surveys cost what, a couple of thousand dollars?
Um, I believe it, um, we, I chatted with staff about it today. It really depends on the kind of structure. Um, more intense structure, more, um, it could require, could cost more than just a couple of hundred dollars. Uh, you, some residential structures will cost, uh, and Ms. Gooby's on the phone, a couple of hundred dollars more, larger structures may cost more.
We were talking, it's like the Brown Hill Cemetery, right?
There are five, five, uh, five structures that are included, and they would include Guy Smith Stadium, the fire rescue drill tower, Cherry Hill Cemetery, Brown Hill Cemetery, and Elm Street Park.
I think it's in the public interest for those to be designated historic landmarks. Um, um, and the HPC seems to, that seems to believe they are historic. So, um, what would, what would we need to do in order to move forward on that?
Um, you could ask us to go find the money and get a process set up to investigate, to prepare the reports. But I don't know what, but I don't know what the cost, I, I will be honest with you, I do not know what the cost is.
My understanding is that the, all five of them together is not, you know, you know, you know, that I, the ones that they averaged on these things, I think it's 1,500, $2,500. But again, I realize there's, it's, they're different stuff. Um, this, these aren't houses, these are cemeteries and, and baseball stadiums, um, you know, city parks and things. Presumably the city has a lot of that data already.
Does anybody know the actual cost of it?
No, I guess that's what we have to find out is.
Michael, do you know the actual cost?
I, I can just say that typically in the past, um, when an architectural survey was done, um, uh, it's generally they're done by the person who owns the property, who'd like to have it designated. Um, but the city has also, uh, had them done in the past for districts. Um, it's, it's hard to forecast what the cost is. Um, it's going to be dependent on who does the survey and how much of an estimate that they're going to give us, um, if it's going to be fairly easy to document, or if it's going to be extensive, because obviously they're going to charge you for the amount of time it's going to take to do that survey. And just having four surveys, or excuse me, five surveys, um, without having discussed with anyone what it might cost, it, it's very hard to estimate.
So if the council wants to provide a higher end dollar limit, not to exceed, I think we could be fine. I believe when we, I discussed it with, um, uh, Ms. Gooby earlier today, um, we anticipated needing to pull together a, um, an RFP to get proposals from people who could do this, this work for us.
And that's what, that's what I would suggest is, is probably going with a, a dollar amount, not to exceed at this point in time. Give staff an opportunity to, um, maybe craft what that, what that evaluation would be for each one of the individual, uh, areas, and then we can just go from there. I mean, you could use like a 25,000, not to exceed 25,000. I mean, that, that should, I would think that would be on the high end.
Okay. Well, I'll make, Mike, I'll make, I, I, I move we ask staff to put together an RFP along the lines Michael just described.
For a second?
Yeah, it would, I'm sure.
Then I'll second that.
All right. Motion's made by councilmember Smiley, second by councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Hey, Mayor Protem Glover? Oh, you're muted. Hey, councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye. This is councilmember Bell.
Okay. Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
I, I just have a, a quick question, uh, before I vote. How come we don't have a better idea of what the cost is when we know this is coming up on, on, uh, an agenda?
Um, councilmember Litchfield, we have, at, at this point, um, as Ms. Gooby has indicated, um, typically homeowners have done the survey work, that have paid for the survey work themselves. Shante, do you know how many times the city has, has done this work, has hired a consultant for this work, or the last time we've done it?
In the times that I can think of, the city has, um, hired it for a district as opposed to individual landmarks.
Okay. So we don't have experience, we do not have experience in, um, hiring a consultant. We have no, we do not have a frame of reference in, in, in doing this work. And we have, at this point, have not had, this item was added to the agenda, um, at the very end of the agenda period, and we just haven't had the time to put the RFP together to determine the cost of that work.
So Ms. Ms. Gooby said a couple of hundred dollars, somebody else said 2,500, and so we throw out 25,000?
Yeah. I, 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 I don't recall I said a couple hundred.
Oh, okay. I must have misheard you. I apologize.
That's okay. I would, I would say it was higher than that.
Okay. Uh, I, I'll, I'll vote yea.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't sure. Could you just sit down, your name, just to be on the safe side?
Yes. Will Litchfield, yea.
Okay, thank you. Um, councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, 6-0.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to item number 13, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is an item added by the council. It's the consideration of adding the Crown Act to the city's, um, state and federal legislative agenda, and I will turn it over to councilmember Daniels.
Thank you. Um, this is a statewide legislation, um, that just prohibits an employer, um, including state agencies and local governments from denying employment to any person, um, due to protective hairstyles. So I'm just asking that we add this to our, um, 2022 legislative, um, agenda, I mean, program. So moved.
So can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you say, when, when you said, um, it pertains to, you say it was government agencies, or is this private agent, or private companies as well?
It didn't say anything about private companies.
So it only, it only pertains to like government entities?
And state, yes, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay.
Okay. I would say, Mayor and Council, there's a pending bill in the General Assembly, uh, North County General Assembly, uh, that, 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 they have not moved the two bills, and there's a federal law as well, but it regulates, um, private employers as well as the public sector. So it's, it's called the Crown. So what?
So it does?
It does, yeah, yeah. And, uh, it, it regulates, uh, private and public employers. So the Crown Act is, it stands for creating a respectful and open workplace for natural hair. Um, so it, it, you know, it protects hairstyles and prohibits discrimination against persons based on traits historically associated with race, hair texture, or hair, hairstyle. Um, so, uh, so I talked with councilmember Daniels, but I think when she was, I, I'll let councilmember Daniels clarify this, but I think she said she just wanted this brought up to council on, 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 on this evening as a discussion, and the matter could be considered later when you, uh, consider adopting your state legislative program and the federal, uh, program later in, in, for 2022, it could be considered then. But I, I didn't, I didn't, she can clarify this, but I don't think she's asking for a vote tonight, but she just wanted it up for discussion and to bring it to your attention.
Okay. I move we put it on our agenda for consideration when that, at that, at that time.
This is councilmember Bell, second.
All right. So motions made by councilmember Smiley, second by councilmember Bell. Any other discussion before I ask for the vote?
Wait.
All right. All, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Hey, Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is councilmember Bell, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, motion passes, 6-0.
All right. Now we move on to the city manager's report.
Um, Mayor and Council, I just hope, um, would ask that you all, um, join me in just expressing our deepest condolences to the McInerney family and the passing of Sergeant Tim McInerney. Um, Tim's sister, um, as well as brother-in-law worked for the city, and Tim leaves, um, behind a daughter, um, Sydney, and we just are very, very sad, and we want to express our condolences to the family, to the, um, police department, and to the city family as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. We've got two comments by the council, Mayor and Council. Let's start with, how about, hmm, councilmember Daniels?
I knew you were going to say my name.
I was staring right at you.
Yeah. Um, I too would like to give my condolences, um, to the family and, um, to the Greenville PD Department on behalf of Sergeant, um, Tim McInerney.
McInerney.
McInerney. Thank you. I apologize. Um, and I also like to wish all of our dads a happy Father's Day, um, this Sunday. I know that sometimes you guys feel unappreciated, um, but you are appreciated. You make our community strong and, and you are valued. Um, remind everybody that Greenville Grooves is tomorrow night, um, at the Town Common as we kick off our celebration of Juneteenth. Um, and we have several events all day Sunday, um, that are posted on our Greenville website. Please visit, please come out, and let's celebrate together. Thank you. Good night.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I know you were a pitcher, so your batting average couldn't have been very good, but, uh, I think tonight's meeting might have taken us, uh, on your meeting average over your batting average, so there's that. But, uh, I, I don't have any comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Smiley?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, no comments.
All right. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Absolutely not. Move so adjourned. No comments right now.
Hey, don't cut off the Mayor Protem and the Mayor. All right. Mayor Protem Glover, you're up.
I'd like to, um, also send condolences to the McInerney family, and I know they're going through a hard time right now, um, so we will keep them in our prayers. And also, um, happy Father's Day to all the fathers, and hope your family treats you real sweet. Day to all the fathers, and hope your family treats you real sweet. That's it.
All right, I too want to send my condolences to the McInerney family, and please keep them in your prayers, especially their daughter, who lost her only living parent, so please keep them in their, in your prayers. Congratulations to our Pirates, unfortunately, they ended the season losing the Super regional, but they played really well this year, made it, made us all proud, we're really excited to see their success, and look forward to next year, and I think next year will be our year to get to Omaha, of course, we say that every year, but I'm, I'm feeling positive this time, so I think we're going to do really well. I hope that some of you were able to get out to the concert on the Commons this, this evening, they're going to have one again next, next weekend, so if you missed it, this Thursday, go next Thursday at six o'clock to see another concert, and then again tomorrow is Greenville Grooves, make sure you get out there, there's going to be some great music by Carol DeShiel, he always puts on an outstanding performance, the music is unbelievable, and people have such a great time. That's from six thirty to nine PM tomorrow at the Town Common, and then please also join the city for several different Juneteenth events that will be taking place on Saturday, the first one is the ribbon cutting for the small business co-op space at four fifteen Evans Street, and then there's a business pop-up shop, food trucks and family fun at Five Points Plaza from eleven to two, live on the block with the GTAC and the African American Cultural Trail at six twenty-nine Alamo Marle Avenue from two thirty to three PM, and then from three PM to five PM, we have an open house for new shared kitchen space commissary at eight oh four West Fifth Street. And I believe today, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it was signed into law that Juneteenth is officially a federal holiday as of today, so pretty exciting stuff, and it is, it's awesome to be in local government at this time, so.
Make it, make, take us another hour and twenty-two minutes, Mayor, we actually will be at the holidays.
Hey, you know what, I don't think I'm going to do that, so. So without any further things to say, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Should move, Mayor.
All right.
Second, already tried once.
All right, motion was made by councilmember Smiley, second by councilmember Meyerhofer, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay, I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Hey, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six zero.
Thank you very much, everybody have a good night, and we.
Good night, everyone.
On Monday.
See ya.